Our students are probably not even coming. I would think.
meeting. We have some items that are time sensitive relative to deadlines that we need to meet. And our next meeting is not till mid-April for a business meeting. So, we're going to begin, first of all, we want to welcome all that are here, also those that might be joining us in the PDC or on our live stream. And would ask Ms. Cheryl Phipps, board member, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So, we'd invite all of you to stand if you would, please.
If you'll please join me in pledging allegiance to the flag of the United States.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Phipps. We have three business items that we need to go through here quickly. Mr. Carter is going to handle our first two, beginning with the Crestview Elementary HVAC replacement. Mr. Carter?
Thank you, President. Before us, for you tonight is a proposal to replace the entire HVAC system at Crestview Elementary. That will include replacing the old steam boiler with two energy-efficient hot water boilers. Piping will be replaced, culinary water lines will be replaced, and the pneumatic control system will be replaced with digital controls. So, it'll be a great upgrade to that school, as well as one that we can control from our central facility as well. So, it's our recommendation that that project be awarded to Brisky Plumbing Specialists in the amount of $1,686,868.
I move that we approve the bid from Brisky Plumbing Specialists for $1,686,868 for the replacement of the HVAC system at Crestview Elementary.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Eckersley, second by Ms. Stevenson, to approve to Brisky Plumbing Specialists the contract for Crestview Elementary HVAC replacement for the amount of $1,686,868. Discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. Mr. Carter, let's go to item number two, North Davis Junior High Partial Roof Replacement, please.
Okay. It's our proposal that we replace most of the roof at North Davis Junior High with a much thicker roof and one that will last longer. It will include the commons and gymnasium areas and some of the building, as well as new flashing insulation across the building as well. This one may have some long lead times because of the material that we're using. So, we hope to get started as soon as we can once school's out and have it finished in early fall.
I move that we approve the bid from Heritage Roofing of $639,800 for the roof, partial roof replacement at North Davis Junior High.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Eckersley, second by Ms. Phipps, to approve to Heritage Roofing for the amount of $639,800, the bid for the partial roof replacement at North Davis Junior High. Discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion also passes. Thank you, Mr. Carter. We'd invite Dr. Linford to come up, if you would, please. This will be the 2022-2023 school fee schedule presented on a second and final reading.
Thank you, President Robinson, Vice President Stevenson, honorable board members, Superintendent Newey, Mr. Carter. It's good to be with you tonight. The fee schedule before you is the 2022-23 fee schedule for high school, junior high, and elementary on a second and final reading.
I'll move that we accept the high school, junior high, and elementary fee schedules for the 2022-2023 school year on a second and final reading.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Mumford, second by Ms. Stevenson, to approve the high school, junior high, school, and elementary school fee schedule for the 2022-2023 school year. Motion, or discussion on that motion? Ms. Mumford?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. Having served on the fee committee board, you'll notice that after discussion and research on increased travel costs, the committee made that adjustment to the travel fee to $1,400. So, I feel like that's more in line with current travel costs and the types of trips that our communities would like to have the opportunity to entertain with their PTAs and their community council groups. So, that's a great change. And then, just based on legislative changes, really the $35 activity fee would be kind of the consistent fee for most students.
Other discussion? Ms. Phipps?
Yeah, I'd like to ask, I don't know if it's Mr. Carter or Mr. Linford, Dr. Linford, that can answer the question, but on fee waivers that happen in a school, what is the current practice for how those affect the school as a whole? Do we somehow reimburse high schools so that we don't have some schools that are more impacted by fee waivers than others?
We do. Mr. Carter?
Yeah, so, part of the state board rule says that one school can't be adversely impacted versus others. So, if we have a school that has a higher percentage of fee waivers than, say, you know, another school, we will share money with them, allocate money, funds to them, to bring them up to the same level as the, I guess, the lowest fee waiver school that we have in the district.
I appreciate that because over the years, that has not always been the case. There were schools that just had to not have some programs because they were funded with less money because of the socioeconomic status of that. And while I'm always concerned about a lot of fees and people that can't afford to sometimes make these trips, and some of the kids that may be able to benefit the most are the ones that won't be making these trips, I think that the problem isn't in the amount that's allowed, but that's something, another solution needs to happen. Some kids may never end up involved in bands that travel because they weren't into, they weren't having that opportunity from a young age to be involved in those kind of programs. And so, the problem about equity isn't necessarily just financial. There are other issues that we, as a whole, need to figure out how to make sure that children, wherever they live, have the same opportunities.
Agreed. Thank you.
One comment I'll make, one thing I've been impressed with is we've traveled and visited some of the schools, and I recently had a conversation with one of our band directors. I've been impressed with, particularly in some of our areas where the income is, as Ms. Phipps described, maybe limits the availability, how other parents or the school itself has been able to find ways to help kids. I remember specifically at Central Davis Junior High School, you know, and the principal there talking about two or three young people that they brought in and they were able to help those kids. So, I'm grateful that we have people that step up and help. It's just not, it'd be nice if we could do that for every single kid, but I know that there's lots of efforts being made, so.
Last few years, great strides have been made by our business administrator and his team, superintendent, to rectify that. I think they've done excellent work. And it costs money, and they've dedicated themselves to that.
Any other discussion? Board, the motion is to approve the fee schedule for high school, junior high, and elementary schools in Davis School District for the 2022-2023 school year. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that's on a second and final reading. Thank you, Dr. Linford.
Thank you.
Before we move forward, I just want to excuse Ms. Gerard, board member who is out of the area at this time, traveling with her family, and also to recognize, we have a state school board member here, Ms. Earl, Ms. Jenny Earl. We appreciate you being here. She's sitting there. If you'd like to stand real quickly, thank you for being here. I will move to our workshop for today. Again, we appreciate all that are with us. I would like to, at the beginning, just for some, it might be a new experience being with us today. And again, we appreciate anybody that has taken the time to join us. The Utah Code, which we follow regarding meetings that are open to the public, this is Code 52-4-102, number two, indicates that the purpose of the open meetings provisions is to ensure that public bodies take their actions openly and conduct their deliberations openly with the knowledge of the public. This law is not a mandate that members of the public be permitted to participate or provide comment in all public meetings. It is important to note that a school board meeting, while open to the public, is not a public meeting in the sense that every person attending has a right to speak or to interrupt the proceedings. So, I think we outlined that on March 1st, talking about the procedures we were going to follow this evening, but just so that, I think the clarification there is that we're bound by what our administrative code in the state of Utah requires us to do and follow that as to the letter of the law. And in line with the Utah Code, we would ask all of those assembled in the auditorium with us here, or in the PDC training room, to follow the rules of decorum this afternoon, which include no questions or comments from the audience, and no cheering or booing or anything of that nature. We appreciate your consideration and support in that. Our intent tonight is to allow board members to share concerns and questions that have come to them from their constituents, and to also allow board members to share any individual concerns or questions they might have about the Summit Learning Platform. Our district and school administrators are available to answer or address the concerns and questions brought up this afternoon. We've asked Dr. Logan Toon, who's our Assistant Superintendent Overseas Curriculum, and Ms. Belinda Cook, our Teaching and Learning Director, to facilitate that discussion, and Superintendent Newey will make a comment about that in a minute. Now, a handout was made available to all of you as you came in. It has some frequently asked questions that we received at the board level and district level. Responses to those questions are included on the handout. Having those questions and answers in hand will allow us, as board members, to take the time that we need to present other questions or concerns that have come to that. So, Superintendent Newey?
Thank you, President. Board, please forgive the voice. I've been losing it for a few days. We appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. We thank our families and students for their interest in this topic tonight that the board has selected to do some work and workshop on. I want to just thank our, first of all, our Teaching and Learning Department, as well as our school administrators, and all of the people that have compiled the data, as well as the background information for the board tonight. Dr. Toon and Ms. Cook doing an excellent job of fulfilling their roles in selecting curriculum, guiding, and providing resource. With the Summit Platform, we have been extremely pleased as an administration in terms of the work our building administrators, our teaching and learning in support has done in that area, and look forward to the opportunity to facilitate the board's questions tonight and hopefully answer them adequately. So, with that, Dr. Toon and Ms. Cook, if you wouldn't mind coming up. Board, just as a note, we wanted to make sure that all resources were available, so we tried to ask that principals be in attendance for any clarification that the board would have, or that Dr. Toon and Ms. Cook felt necessary. We'll ask Dr. Toon and Ms. Cook to kind of carry the discussion in terms of facilitation and direction, but are certainly subservient to the board's direction and question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newey. So, the format that we're going to follow this evening, to try to be as orderly as we can, and to make this the type of format that will allow us to cover all of what we feel are the critical items and concerns, we're going to ask each board member to just, they might have a list of 10 or 15 or 20 that they brought, but we're going to allow, we're going to ask them to take two, to take the opportunity to present two to Dr. Toon and Ms. Cook and anybody else that they've asked to maybe answer the problem or the concern. And then, we'll go to the next individual, and we'll just go through on a rotating basis until we've had a chance to complete the list that we have as board members. And I'd ask Mr. Eckersley if he would lead us off to begin with. So, Mr. Eckersley?
One of the concerns that we see regularly from parents is the increased stress that their students are under. In many occasions, they have expressed that their student in the past has done very, very well, they've gotten very good grades, and now with the Summit Program, they're taking the test, they're failing, they're taking it again, they're failing, and they're starting to lose confidence in themselves and their ability to learn, even wondering how smart they are. And what the parents are reporting, I haven't talked really to that many students, but what the parents are reporting is that their son or daughter seems to be under a great deal of stress in trying to manage and work through the Summit Program. So, I was just wondering if somebody could address that.
So, we will address that maybe in two parts. I'll ask Ms. Cook to talk about the grading procedures and philosophies within Summit and how they might differ from what most students are accustomed to. And then, if I could, I'll ask Dr. Paul to maybe come and share some of the things they're doing to support students in their school as they face this stress. And then, but first, I want to start with an acknowledgement of that concern. That's a critical concern, and it's one that we want to attend to swiftly and completely. We want to make sure our students are okay mentally and emotionally. That's a top priority for us as a district. So, with that said, we'll hit the question from both fronts.
So, within the tool, there is, and I'm sure you've heard, the blue line. And the students, the blue line is not their favorite thing. As the blue line paces the student throughout each course, throughout the year, they have a complete year view. And as they complete both power focus area assessments, additional focus area assessments, as they complete projects, those items turn red, yellow, green, and that blue line is what paces them. I think one of the sources of added stress and anxiety comes that that student logs on every day, and they see the blue line every day in the full year view. One of the things that we've asked Summit to do and have submitted a help ticket for is, could that be toggled? So, it could be just a day view. What do I need to do today? What do I need to do this week? What could I do this month? In our traditional system, through our other tools and our quarters, we have a midterm and we have a final. And so, there was significant stress, is significant stress, in that midterm and in that final. And that's where students, oh, I'm behind, oh, I don't have this assignment done, oh, I did poorly on this test, I did poorly on this quiz. So, there was two very defined times of stress typically for a student, and that was midterm and final. And now, with a system that is as robust, and a tool that is as robust, that tracks all of those assignments that are required, and what should be happening on a daily basis to be able to pace this throughout the year, I think that that contributes to that feeling of, I'm behind, I'm overwhelmed, how do I catch up, and seeing that. I think also that, as we really look at students, particularly our families that are saying, my student has been an honor student, or my student's been an excellent student, and now they're experiencing this stress, and they don't feel like they're doing well, and they're not passing the AFAs, or they're not passing the PFAs, or they may be passing but not maybe at the level that they have been. Part of our challenge is in our system, when we report, it says failing, but it might be a 70%, or it might be a failing grade and an 85%. When that's not really true, the student's not failing, they're just off track. So, we have some updates in our system that we need to do so that we could either have an OT for off-track or an incomplete, because the student is not complete with the course, but the student really is being successful. There are other matters, but I think those questions will come in regards to the F A or P F A, so I'll wait for those.
So, I was recently, had two different experiences, one with my neighborhood, who does not attend the school that uses the Summit Learning Platform, and one at my school when we were talking to these groups about mindfulness. And every single student in the non-Summit schools and the Summit School says school is their number one stressor. I think learning can be stressful, and like Dr. Toon said, we're very aware of the impact that learning has on our students, and we want to help them be as successful as possible. As we, as administrators, have collaborated on best approaches to support student learning and help ease that stress, it's a tiered approach, and we appreciate parents that are involved and supportive of their students. That's huge in our system. As we look at different tiers, we try and accommodate the lowest level of intervention first, and that's typically done through a mentoring class period, which our schools have. It's 30 to 60 minutes every single day for students to get support. From there, at North Davis Junior High and other schools, we have hired TAs or Student Success Coordinators. At our school, we have one Student Success Coordinator for every core subject in every single grade, and those Student Success Coordinators are providing immediate support. For the first time ever, we have data that we don't have to wait till midterm or end of term to intervene. We know the day after if a student understands the content, or if they don't understand the content. So, those Student Success Coordinators have been imperative because they can, instead of having an autopsy intervention at the end of the term, they have InstaCare intervention and can support that student the day after they didn't learn the concept. From there, we've also implemented study skills every single period through an AmeriCorps grant at our school, so kids that need extra time have that extra time. We all believe that every kid can learn. That's a passionate statement that I believe all educators know and believe. We believe all kids can learn, we just believe time is the variable. Some kids need more time, and we understand that. So, like Ms. Cook said, although it says an F or a failing grade on the report card, that just means you're off track right now. You haven't learned it yet. We believe through increased support, you will get there and you will demonstrate competency in those areas.
So, second question? Is that where I'm at?
Okay.
on every day and they see the blue line every day in the full year view. One of the things that we've asked Summit to do and have submitted a help ticket for is, could that be toggled? So it could be just a day view. What do I need to do today? What do I need to do this week? What could I do this month? In our traditional system, through our other tools and our quarters, we have a midterm and we have a final. And so there was significant stress, is significant stress, in that midterm and in that final. And that's where students, oh, I'm behind, oh, I don't have this assignment done, oh, I did poorly on this test, I did poorly on this quiz. So there was two very defined times of stress typically for a student, and that was midterm and final. And now with a system that is as robust and a tool that is as robust that tracks all of those assignments that are required and what should be happening on a daily basis to be able to pace this throughout the year, I think that that contributes to that feeling of, I'm behind, I'm overwhelmed, how do I catch up? And seeing that. I think also that as we really look at students, particularly our families that are saying, my student has been an honor student, or my student's been an excellent student, and now they're experiencing this stress and they don't feel like they're doing well and they're not passing the AFAs or they're not passing the PFAs. Or they may be passing but not maybe at the level that they have been. Part of our challenge is in our system, when we report, it says failing, but it might be a 70%, or it might be a failing grade and an 85%. When that's not really true, the student's not failing, they're just off track. So we have some updates in our system that we need to do so that we could either have an OT for off track or an incomplete, because the student is not complete with the course, but the student really is being successful. There are other matters, but I think those questions will come in regards to the F A or P F A, so I'll wait for those.
So I was recently, had two different experiences, one with my neighborhood who does not attend the school that uses the Summit Learning Platform, and one at my school when we were talking to these groups about mindfulness. And every single student in the non-Summit schools and the Summit School says, school is their number one stressor. I think learning can be stressful, and like Dr. Toon said, we're very aware of the impact that learning has on our students, and we want to help them be as successful as possible. As we, as administrators, have collaborated on best approaches to support student learning and help ease that stress, it's a tiered approach, and we appreciate parents that are involved and supportive of their students. That's huge in our system. As we look at different tiers, we try and accommodate the lowest level of intervention first, and that's typically done through a mentoring class period, which our schools have. It's 30 to 60 minutes every single day for students to get support. From there, at North Davis Junior High and other schools, we have hired TAs or Student Success Coordinators. At our school, we have one Student Success Coordinator for every core subject in every single grade, and those Student Success Coordinators are providing immediate support. For the first time ever, we have data that we don't have to wait till midterm or end of term to intervene. We know the day after if a student understands the content or if they don't understand the content. So those Student Success Coordinators have been imperative, because they can, instead of having an autopsy intervention at the end of the term, they have insta-care intervention and can support that student the day after they didn't learn the concept. From there, we've also implemented study skills every single period through an AmeriCorps grant at our school. So kids that need extra time have that extra time. We all believe that every kid can learn. That's a passionate statement that I believe all educators know and believe. We believe all kids can learn, we just believe time is the variable. Some kids need more time, and we understand that. So like Ms. Cook said, although it says an F or a failing grade on the report card, that just means you're off track right now, you haven't learned it yet. We believe through increased support, you will get there and you will demonstrate competency in those areas.
So, second question, is that where I'm at?
Okay. My second question has to do with the testing itself, the AFAs and the PFAs. I'm letting my age out, but I have been an educator for, and teacher for 45 years. And during that time, I have noticed something interesting about tests, especially tests that have been written by somebody other than the teacher of the class. And what I've noticed about testing, and I don't know if this is true of Summit, because I've never looked at PFA or F A tests, but something I've noticed about tests that I have seen over the years is that the person making up the test always likes to put some questions in there that are not easy to answer and often have a bit of a trick to them unless the person really is skilled at thinking and problem solving, critical thinking. And as all of us know, when it comes time to take a test, our brain is just not in a position to do a lot of critical thinking because of the pressure we feel at the time while we're taking the test. And so I can't help but think that one of the reasons that we're getting so much report from parents that their students are failing these tests and suffering through a lot of pressure and anxiety from taking these tests is just the nature of the questions that are being asked on the test. So I'm wondering how much control, and can we take a look at the tests themselves and see if maybe just the questions that are being asked is part of the problem for the anxiety that is being felt by students and the inability of so many of them to be unable to pass those tests?
So we have full control of the tool and can remove questions, can add questions, can add resources, remove resources, and that is all under our control. With those trick questions, that's not been my experience within the tool and within the curriculum, that there are trick questions. There are banks that questions are generated to the F A and the P F A. And I know that in discussions with parents, one of the frustrations is that a student will take an F A and a P F A and they'll miss it, and the tool will report to them the category but not the exact question. And that is frustrating, because then that could be an aid to help study and to learn the material that is perceived as not being available, because it's only in the category and not the specific question. We do have some challenges that we are working with our teachers to address. Teachers will be meeting with us towards the end of the month, and we want to really take a look at resources. We have far too many resources for students as they're working on that, what I like to call content upload. You have to have basic knowledge in that issue, topic, subject that we're trying to teach students, and they have to have some content upload in the forms of articles, in the forms of encyclopedia articles, in the forms of videos. And students don't always choose the best resource, and part of that is we have too many. So we're going to work with teams of teachers to really reduce the number of resources that are available and that have a very tight alignment and coherence to the questions that are going to be asked on those quizzes. So that's one area that we want to work in and that we want to help our teachers and our students. And then we're also, while we're doing that coherence work, we're also going to work on, is every question aligned to that first question we ask in professional learning communities of teachers? What is that we want students to learn? And as we ask that question, what do we want them to learn? Is every single question in every single F A and P F A exactly what we want? And if it's not, then we're going to work to remove those. So we are hopeful that some of those things that we can put into place, in particular for fourth term right now, will remedy some of those situations that students are taking. We also need to take a look at time. The F A and P F As are supposed to take about 14%, that counts as 14% of a student's grade. And it's being reported that that's where students are spending the majority of their time. Well, we want that same, about that approximate amount of time spent on an F A and P F A for content upload, so that they can take that information and they use that in the projects and in that application, because that's where the critical thinking comes, and that's where we want them taking that knowledge and applying that. So that's our hope, that we can do some realignment there, and that will help students with lowering that affective filter as they test.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Tanner?
Thank you. I am really grateful that this topic is on our agenda for today. I think it's a really important and timely one, and grateful to all those who made that possible. Can I just add a follow-up question on your, or does that count as one of my two? Just, I wasn't sure when you said 14% of their time is, should be taken up for the PFAs, does that only include taking the test, or does it also include studying in order to pass the PFA?
We would want that to include that studying, so we also need to work and help students, especially in those transition from sixth to seventh and from ninth to 12th, help our students become better note takers, help them become better, have better study skills and learn those study skills so that they're more efficient and they're more effective in their study.
Okay, thank you. I guess, okay, my first question is, are we going for blended learning here? It seems to me, from watching Farmington High from the beginning, that we are going for blended learning. And in my understanding, blended learning, I've been reading some research articles on this, it's the thoughtful fusion of face-to-face and online learning together. And one researcher states it this way, "For effective online integration, instructors should make a clear connection between the online and in-class learning experiences so students do not miss the connection or thread needed to make sense of the blend." So is that, I picture a class where during the day, the student has in-class direct instruction from the teacher, you know, engaging activities in the class, but then also maybe during the class, then they'll have some online experiences that support what they learned that day in the class. And then the next day, they'd have in-class activities that support what they learned online, so that it's very fused together, there's a lot of connection and thread there. Is that what we're going for, or do we want it just very separate and you've got your class activities and projects and your online things and they're separate?
If you don't mind, I'd like to ask Principal Swanson to come up and take the second part of this question. If it looks or feels like the teacher and interpersonal interactions with the teacher have been replaced by an online system, then we're not doing it right. That's not the intent of the program, that's not the intent of the implementation. We're looking at that, we're trying to get as much enhanced interpersonal interaction, which means it's not enhanced in terms of more minutes, we have as many minutes as we have, but enhanced by virtue of making sure that those personal interactions that teachers have with students are focused on what that student needs in a very personalized way. And that's, and that's not true just of Summit, that's true of all of our efforts in blended and personalized work. We looked at our usage data, that's in here. Our sense is that when we look at averages across the whole district, all the users that are using Summit Learning, we're right around 33 minutes per day, per student, on average. Now, on average doesn't mean that's every single student's experience. And certainly there are students who are having an experience where the screen time feels excessive, there's too much computer and not enough teacher. But I'd like, if you're okay, to have Principal Swanson share, he started with blended learning research that led to this direction. So maybe talk a little bit about that, Principal Swanson, and then what you're doing now to enhance those interpersonal interactions with, between teachers and students?
So that's going to vary and differ from day to day, from class to class, depending on what that topic, what that instruction, what their lesson is going to be on that day. Each day throughout, throughout the class, a student is going to have direct instruction in each class each day. That's going to look different. Sometimes it will be more time, sometimes less time. Just this last Thursday, we went through four different suites, which would make up anywhere from 17 to 20 rooms in our building, and we went through speaking with some other people, and there was not one laptop that was open, not one screen that was being used out of each of those suites. That was just by chance. So there is going to be direct instruction. However, that doesn't necessarily mean that the student would cover that direct instruction in the day, and then that night, there would be that blended add-on that they would take care of at home. Some of that will take place where teachers can quickly identify the students that are being successful, the students that are understanding the concept, and also they can quickly identify those students who are struggling. And so oftentimes, we'll see that some students might be working on one activity in a group, or they might be leveraging technology for that instruction, and the teacher would take some of those other struggling students, and they would have a direct instruction opportunity with them that would be above and beyond what that class time lecture or direct instruction would be. So that would change from day to day, depending on what the teachers are looking to accomplish with that day, but there would be direct instruction in each class each day, and then students, again, in preparation for some of these assessments, PFAs, AFAs, where there would be more resources that students could take. And that playlist can be really to many different learning styles, from PowerPoint presentations to videos to notes to whatever that might be, but a whole variety of different playlists that the students would be able to access depending on what learning style they feel like is in their best interest.
Thank you. And I want to add just one more thing, Ms. Tanner, if I can, just a clarification. On our student usage data that I cited before, that's active student usage in the Summit Platform. So if a student's working on one of these projects and they've got their data pulled up in an Excel spreadsheet and they're analyzing it, that wouldn't be part of the data that we utilize. It's just how long is a student enrolled on a student, a district-issued student device actively engaging in Summit during the schooling?
So it sounds like, for the most part, it's probably separate. Like, there could be days that, I mean, it's two separate things, what the teacher's teaching, because the students are all at different levels in the online learning.
I don't, see, if I could just add to that, because being very familiar with Farmington, I don't think it is separate, and it isn't intended to be. We certainly have, are always working towards that, as we are with any program or method of instruction, to blend all of our instruction. We don't want anything being separate from one part of the instruction or the other. We intend to support and interact with each other, and when, you know, the board's been out many times in our programs, because I've been with them, and each time I've been there, it has been blended. And so that is, it is not separate and not intended to be. Now, that doesn't mean all we've accomplished and arrived at that all the time.
Okay, so that's what we're going for?
So if we could look at the big picture, I think, and vision, that our goal is to have our seniors exit our system and have all of the mastery, autonomy, and purpose that we have in the Portrait of a Graduate. Those are all of the skills and abilities we want students to have. We get there through personalized competency-based learning, and personalized competency-based learning does not require to have digital tools or a blended learning platform, but it sure makes it easier. And I would say that in every classroom, every day across Davis School District, we have teachers using tools, digital tools, to blend the instruction for our students, because in many of those tools, there is immediate data and that instructional adjustments can be made. So that's the 100,000-foot view.
That's the ideal that we're working towards. Okay. Okay, second question is, many parents and students are dissatisfied with their experiences with Summit program. What would be your recommendation for these parents and students that have been dissatisfied with their experience?
The level of dissatisfaction is an important consideration. If that dissatisfaction is related to a class, then the best place to go for support to get those concerns addressed is the teacher who is overseeing the students' work in that class. If that ends up being unsuccessful, or if the concern spans multiple classes, then I think a conversation would be warranted with school administration and that, and take very specific, here's an example of something that isn't working for my student. You know, I, those kinds of specifics, we're pretty good at getting those kinds of specific issues resolved. Generalities and differences of philosophy and things like that are a little bit more challenging for us to address. Doesn't mean we can't, we don't want you to come and share those concerns with us, we definitely do. The schools who are implementing Summit, they're better trained than board members and district administrators, they know the program better, and they're more well-equipped to handle those, to really seek solutions for those kinds of problems. So my recommendation is, identify the specific aspect of learning that's not working for your student and bring that specific issue to the person who's the closest to that challenge, whether that's the teacher or the school administration. Certainly, district administration is ready to help with some of the larger questions that maybe span schools or span, or if the solutions aren't arrived at in conversation with the schools. And we are all ears, the doors are open, the phone lines are open, the emails are kind of busy but also still open, we just might be a little slower than we want to on that one. But we welcome that and encourage folks to address their concerns at the closest to problem level as possible.
My first question has to do with, does Summit work for learning challenges like those who have an IEP or that are on a 504? I also had a parent contacting me with a daughter with dyslexia. So really, when we look at learning disabilities, or again, the classification that might come with an IEP or 504, does Summit work?
Can I say one thing before you give the real answer?
Mr. Swanson, I'm going to ask you to weigh in on that, if you want to.
Summit is, as any online learning system is, or any online text or anything that we deliver to our students, is a text-heavy program. And that comes with challenges, especially for students who struggle with their reading skills. And so Ms. Cook, I think, has been exploring this question in particular the last little while to take a look at where we are, and then we'll have Mr. Swanson chime in on it.
So in meeting with our schools and speaking specifically with our students who receive special education services or have a 504 plan or perhaps have other challenges, things that schools are working on to do, part of the tool that's so fantastic is, again, that immediate access to data and to know exactly where a student is struggling and to be able to tailor instruction and tailor personalized supports for that student. Some of the things that we are seeing out in schools is scaffolded note-taking organizers. So for our special education, for our students receiving those services, that can be a big help for them, and that is a scaffolded support. Reducing the number of questions that they would take in the assessments is also a pretty typical accommodation that is made, but that is also being made within the Summit Text to speech and speech to text is something that we teach our students to use and to access, so that they, if it's text-heavy, that they can have that help of having the text read to them, or if they're, they need to write an essay, that they can do the speech to text and get a lift that way as well. Schools are creating, in particular, English Language Arts and Math videos that help with that content upload for our students to receive those services. And with the opportunity- And with the opportunity to have increased teacher-assistant support in our schools, that, that ratio of teacher-to-student support can actually be increased because we have additional adults and support for those students.
I had a chance to visit with Mr. Swanson and some staff members in trying to increase my knowledge of Summit. And as part of that, I had a chance to, to listen to his Special Education Department head. Would you just share maybe a few things that, Ms., it's Ms. Bacon?
Yes.
Just, just a couple of things, including students that have been signed out.
Yes, thank you. I love this question, and, and had a very lengthy conversation last Friday afternoon with my department chair as I was preparing to leave for the day. She came down and said, I need to talk with you for a few, about a few different things. So we spent much time into the night on Friday afternoon talking about this exact question and how this impacts our special ed students. Ms. Bacon is a fantastic teacher, as are all of our special ed teachers. And I love their laser focus on improving students and helping students think and learn. One of the things that you mentioned at the end there is, I've been at several different schools, three different high schools, two different junior highs, and each year at Farmington High School, we have signed four to five different students out of special education, just in IEPs that I have sat in, where the parents have said, my student no longer needs this IEP, because the thing that we see on the majority of IEPs is extended time, breaking down assignments into smaller chunks and having things read to them. And this is something that every student within our building has the opportunity to access at Farmington High School. And so it's something that our special ed team really feels very positive about. My special ed teacher began in the year 2000 and said she hasn't ever experienced more aha moments with her students and individually reaching her students than she has in her last four years at Farmington High School. One of the things that she mentions, that she speaks to, is again, some of the student interaction. One of those things that I mentioned was having tests or assignments read to them, where we can automatically do that within the platform. Students can put on a headphone, be in a class, be taking an assessment, having an assignment, having some of the course material read aloud to them, and they're not being, they don't feel like they're being pointed out or checked out like they might in other schools where they're pulled out and they have one adult and one student, and all the other students watch that one adult read to them in a classroom. We have that built within the platform that they can do. But what we're seeing within our special ed department is great growth. We've also had, and this sounds as a negative tone, and I don't mean this negative, but we'll have some students that will come up in 10th grade, and they'll still be at a very low reading level, at a second-grade comprehension, and they have straight A's in school all the way up till the day they get to us in their sophomore year of high school. There's some real, there's a lot of gapping and a lot of bridges that we need to overcome in that type of a situation, that it's not just an aide or a teacher sitting down doing those activities with the student for that student, but that that student is being able to process information as well and share what they've processed.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Ms. Cook?
I just wanted to add to that, that our schools who are implementing Summit are really doing an excellent job of helping students who receive those special ed services access grade-level content, which is always a challenge. And they're really doing a great job in bringing those students, again, up from sometimes very low levels to access grade-level content, and that is the expectation, and that is the law, and sometimes we struggle to get there.
Another question I had, Ms., Ms. Tanner covered with the direct instruction, so let me go to another one on my list. And I think we'll probably find maybe some questions we have are already presented, and that's fine. And the other in the spectrum, the Summit, do you feel the Summit has the flexibility to accommodate students who complete their work early in the term? You talked about the blue line. I mean, I've seen, and sit down with counselors and that, there's kids that are just, they're done. I mean, they've done everything, and they've done it early in the year. But I've had a few parents who have indicated that they have a student that's able to do that, and then they just have to sit there, and they're getting bored because there's nothing else for them to do once they get that completed. Can you address that, please?
We have lots of students who complete all of their AFAs and their PFAs. The projects are still on pace with the rest of the class. So there's an opportunity within projects for students to go more deeply and to, so if we look at Bloom's taxonomy, and where do we want the thinking to be? We want the thinking to be at the very top, and that's that creation, and they have the opportunity in projects to do that. Where sometimes we struggle in public education is on that application access. And so when we have knowledge in the discipline, we apply in the discipline, we apply across disciplines, we apply across disciplines in predictable ways. And then that very farthest goal is to apply knowledge across disciplines in real-world problems in, with unpredictable problems as well. And so that's an opportunity within the projects to leverage that very farthest application. And with most of our junior highs, we're, we've either implemented for three-quarters of a year or in, or in one grade level, a year and a three-quarters. We're still struggling to find the balance and find the, the gaps and holes, and that's typical of any curriculum adoption. It takes about three years to finally have the curriculum adoption exactly where you want it, with the district having worked with teachers, identifying gaps and holes, building district-created resources to meet those things. And I'm sure that there's more that we can do there. There's, there's a lot of room for growth, but there's also room for a student to deeply study a project, and that we, we need to build more supports there for that as well.
I'll add to that, too. This, this challenge that you've outlined is, is not a challenge that's unique to, in classrooms that are using Summit. Every day in every classroom, almost, you'll find students who have met the basic objective for that classroom day, and it's incumbent on us to provide resources for those teachers so that they can keep the students engaged in meaningful and productive work. The one benefit that I think any personalized system that has a digital component to it is that the student does have the ability to move on to something either that's next or that's different. I was in a classroom not too long ago, and it wasn't a Summit-based classroom, but it, it looked like one of the students was off task. And so I went over and I just asked the kid, what are you doing? I'm working on my thing for this other class, the student said, and I thought, oh, great. Well, I didn't know for sure if that student was caught up in the current class or not, but it seemed like a really good idea to me. Having access 24/7 to the resources for all their classes will allow the student to be able to navigate that gap of time if they've reached that mastery at a certain time during their class.
Just a quick follow-up. At the high school level, they could, they could go online for, with college courses as well, right?
Yep.
So it's not for every student, but we do also have the possibility for students to accelerate. And we don't have a lot of students choosing the option to accelerate to the next grade level, but that is an option that we would individually work with every student and family.
Thank you. Ms. Stevenson?
I just want to say thank you to both of you and all others involved in putting that packet together. That is a lot of information. And I, I know that's hours of work, so I appreciate that. I, I've been friends with Belinda Cook for a long time, and I don't think we still are friends, because I have bugged her so much this last month on questions. I just called her with my questions, and my number one was about our sped students. John took that question tonight, but she gave a great answer tonight, but she's answered that several times for me. That's my number one concern on this whole thing, and, and thanks for looking out for them and, and caring for them. Gordon took my other question that I wanted to start off with, was teacher and student relationship and, and screen time. And you've included all that in numbers eight and nine on our packet, and I thought that was a great explanation. So I'm, I'll move on. I'm sure we all have plenty of questions, and John assured me that we would go until everyone was done. But I kind of felt like Julie was. I wanted one thing clarified, but I don't dare for fear of being one of my questions. So I'm just gonna move on to, to the...
Julie's already broke the rule, so go ahead.
Oh, so I can do it? So the, the off-task was, was, but you did just talk about that. Good to know that they can move on to other classes or whatever if they need to. But how does a teacher know, unless it was Logan walking around and seeing it? How does a teacher know if they're off-track or if they're playing games, or if they're not actually working Summit?
The first answer to that question is the teachers have to be actively teaching in that class while the students are in the room. And that's, that's an essential, that, that kind of hearkens back to Ms. Tanner's question about whether this is blended or whether this is just a separate online system. The active teaching that happens during class is what's going to assist the teacher with knowing where the students are. And maybe if it's okay, and I know we've asked Principal Swanson to talk a lot, can, can I ask Principal Swanson to join us and talk about?
Remember, this isn't one of my questions, so make it short, Richard. This was a clarification.
No, it's okay. I think that's a, it's an important clarification that we make, because the, I'd like you to at least have his perspective on the, on the data that's available to the teachers regarding their student status.
Okay.
And we'll count it as an answer to the prior question.
Okay, thank you.
Even though I'm not a teacher.
We're all scared of John.
So our, our teachers do have that information on where their students are at. Now, along with that, not just within our Summit, any personalized Canvas-blended school, we have great programs within our district, things such as NetNanny, that we'll have some of our schools that are using. My teachers can see in every classroom, the screen, that every student in the classroom, if they're on a DSD, on a Davis School District device, they can see what is on that screen at any time that they would like to throughout the classroom. But I think what, what Dr. Tuna said is really the essential part. The anticipation is that teachers will be up and moving throughout that room and being able to quickly identify. Dr. Paul talked about this a little bit previously, but our teachers, it's not just waiting for that midterm grade or till that end-of-term grade, and I know that there's areas that we can and need to improve. But our teachers do spend a lot of time outside that class time where they can identify groups of students that maybe are ready to move ahead, that they can meet with them individually, but also they can group students that are struggling together, so they can do that workshop or direct instruction with them. But they have that, that information at their fingertips continuously. And, and we as a school also have that from teacher to teacher, grade to grade, subject to subject, that we can look and see comparisons with where students are at and how students are performing in their different classes, and what needs or gaps they have.
Thank you. I just didn't want them to be a teacher off, because I think this, if I understand right, they can pull a group of kids off and work with them, and then all of a sudden, kids are like, ah, she's with another group, I can jump on. But it's the same as in most of our traditional platforms. They can see what everybody's... Okay, for my two questions, or my third or fourth. Parental support, that's a concern of mine. Most of the parents that we're hearing from, and, and I, I know all of us have read, I've read every email that's come, and I'm sure the rest of the board has, and as well as I've come in and read the comment cards that have been left, and talked to a lot of parents. I've talked to teachers. I've talked to students. Some of the students have told me it involves a lot of parental support, and many, many parents have told me that. I worry about those students that might not have that parental support. So could you address that?
So within the structure of a classroom, there is built-in time. Here's direct instruction. Here's self-directed time for you as a student to get into the platform and to do some of that content upload, to take the assessments, as well as there's opportunity for small-group workshop. So because it's a secondary system, they use the word workshop instead of small group, because I think small group may seem elementary, but it's the, it's essentially the same process we use in elementary. This student may have need of some coaching with content upload. These five students, I'm gonna pull them to do a small-group workshop. These students may need the same kind of technical assistance on their project. So I'm going to work with them on this very specific struggle they're having with writing. Or I really liked what I'm seeing here, and I want to pull all of you together, these five students, and go through what I'm seeing in your writing, and you may be very, very proficient, and I'm gonna give you those keys to have you go to that next level in your writing and really improve. The goal is to have all of that support happen within the school day. And so whether that's within the classroom time, whether that may be in a mentoring class, the goal is that every student, including our students who may not have the same level of parental support as others, could get that help and assistance from teachers during that class time.
And I'll add to that, too. I think that the parental support, and this is acknowledging one of the challenges that we've heard from, from many people, but also, you know, I have the, I have the luxury of being a parent of a student in this, this school district as well, several students. And I don't want to project their experience onto this discussion too much. They happen to be at a, at a school that is using Summit, for their platform for some of their classes. And it used to be that when my daughter had a problem, that she needed my assistance with that parental support that you're talking about. I need help with this. We'll go get your math book and your notepad, and come sit down at the dining room table, and we'll open it up, and we'll get through it. Now, it looks a little different, because now, as a parent, I have to remember my password to the Summit parent portal, which I'm not living in every day, and I have to remember how to navigate the system, and I have to know where to click to find the, the... And that can be a challenge, and that's, and that sincerely stated, like, we've, in, in implementing a new platform, we've also kind of asked our parents to be a part of this platform, too, as they're creating support through those parent portals. So that's kind of an opportunity for growth for us, too. We need to, we need to do everything we can, do everything we've already done, and then some, to assist our parents in accessing, so that they know how to quickly navigate, so that it's just as comfortable as what it used to look like, which was flip open your math book on, on the dining room table and let's get you taken care of. So just a little acknowledgement of a point of opportunity for us there.
But we're not leaving those kids behind. Sounds like with mentoring programs and hours in the day that we can take care of them.
That, that's a real hallmark, is the mentoring program and mentoring with students. The primary function of the mentoring is that students are taking ownership and they're setting goals, and the mentor helps coach them towards those goals, and provides and is looking out for ways to support them, becomes that student's advocate, and finding those resources, whether it is a person, or it's a, a resource, or it's time. And so that's a real hallmark.
Okay, before I go to my second, I do appreciate the fact that your department is willing to look at where our holes are and what we need to do and the change, and to, you know, find those things that we need to spruce up or remove or, or change about. My second one is concerning teacher. Overload for our teachers, the, just precisely feedback, the feedback overload that they have to give back to their students. And then on the other side of that, we're hearing that some students, it's a long response before they, they get those. Are you seeing that, or are we, what, what is?
The shift in pedagogy is a heavy lift. And for our teachers in schools that have implemented during the pandemic, they have had training, but it's been virtual. And we are hoping that this summer's training will be able to be in person again, because we think that that is a very valuable experience that they have when they can be face-to-face with other teachers and really talk about how to make that pedagogy shift from, I am lecturing for ninety minutes, to students have an opportunity for smaller instruction, for content upload, self-directed learning, setting those goals, and being able to dive deeply into a project. So we're hoping that that helps. Where that shift from preparing a ninety-minute lecture and a class discussion has shifted to, I'm going to give you feedback. And we know that for students to truly experience growth, they have to have immediate and clear feedback. And our class sizes are large. Our teachers teach six classes. When you're looking at giving feedback to two-hundred-and-twenty-five to two-hundred-and-fifty students, that is overwhelming. So as we have worked with our customer service representative, as we've worked with our teachers, saying, how can we help? One of the things that we want to tackle this summer is to build feedback banks. So as, as a, as a former educator, you know that as you're preparing a lesson, you're like, this is where students are gonna have misconceptions. You already know that these are the misconceptions that students are going to run into. We know that that's what's going to happen in the projects as well. If we can build really robust feedback banks for every single checkpoint that a teacher can copy and paste in for a student to give that... that a teacher can copy and paste in for a student to give that specific feedback, we believe and, and we know when, when teachers are giving that clear feedback, it really helps student growth and learning. That's one of the things that we want to help with. When Farmington implemented in that year one, that was a huge shift. And we tried to support our teachers with, we'll pay for your subs, come to the district. How can we help you work on that feedback loop? How can we work on the cog skills to help, the cognitive skills to help make that? That offer's open all the time, but admittedly, implementing during the pandemic has not allowed our teachers to get together because of, there are no subs or haven't been. We're in a better situation now, but there haven't been subs that we can access. Teachers didn't want to be out of their classrooms. They're worried about learning loss. And so we are looking forward to this summer, looking forward to some in-person trainings and looking forward to helping our teachers build feedback banks. So that giving that timely feedback can be one of the things that really helps our students.
Perfect. Thank you.
Ms. Phipps?
So I, I'm overheard trying to work on my breathing because I'm stressed because my, my parents always told me while people first, their, most people's first words are things like mom and daddy. Mine was why? And so I have a lot of why questions and so I, while I was a little worried about whether there would be things that I still wanted to ask by the time it got down to me, I appreciated that I got a lot of my whys taken care of through the way. So let me maybe dive just a little bit deeper on a couple of the questions. I just have to say to those that are listening and specifically parents that your stories, individual stories have touched all of our hearts and are very poignant and, and are concerning because we're here about a whole child and not just what they are able to learn. But all of, all of the thing of a child is important to us. And, and when we have children that are stressed for a number of reasons, and academics have always caused stress. I had the same stresses as, as a kid as well and under a different platform. So, but I just appreciate one, parents to know that, that your input in, in the stories you've shared, especially about your struggling students have been heard by us and, and are concerned, I think, to everybody. And, and, and so I appreciate the work toward resolving those things so that people can feel that their children are safe and, and we reduce the stresses as much as we can. So with that, one of the things that through time, this is like when I was your age kind of stories to start. But I, I, it, it seems to me that among the things that I've seen through time is that some of the distress that happens among parents is that we don't bring them along at, along. They, they suddenly find themselves in the middle of a new thing. And you know, I can bring back math when it was rolled out and parents didn't know how to help their kids. And, and so there's, there, it seems to me that, that some of the problem happens that, that we're not engaging all of our stakeholders early enough and fully enough so that parents know. I, I think that in our last meeting, a lot of people indicated that they don't know how to help their children in the right way. They don't fully understand what's happening on, on that. And even, so not just academically, again, that when they see their students struggling emotionally because of the stress, are we giving them the tools? And so could you maybe address, what are we doing to, to offer more training so that parents can be fully engaged? They have that responsibility. And I just appreciate parents do want to be a part of it. They, they do see themselves as the primary educator. We don't just drop our kids off at school and say educate our kids and, and then bring them back, you know, with a degree. We are, we, it's, it's the responsible thing for parents to be engaged. So can you just speak to that idea of what do we do to, to, to give more tools and so parents can? And, and what we need to do to, to help them be able to be engaged earlier on in this so that they have the tools to help?
Two, two things. First, generally, in every classroom, regardless of platform, you're right. The, the words, I'm a parent and I'm here to help are music to the ears of our teachers and our school leaders. And so if you are willing and you want to be involved, come be involved and, and we, we welcome you to be involved. What we're specifically with respect to, to Summit, there's, there's two questions that I think are sort of nested in the one. One is what can we be, what can we do to be involved in the decision about Summit? Like whether we're going to do Summit at this school or not? For the schools that are using Summit, that process happened a while ago. Some people think that process was sufficient, some people think it was insufficient, but that process happened. For schools moving forward, we will be working with district administration to kind of establish set of expectations and criteria by which the appropriate stakeholders are involved in making big decisions about platforms for the schools. And in making that, we're going to look to the lessons that we've learned from the schools that have done it. And in no way is there a statement in this direction we're going that we think that it was wrong the first time. But just noting now that we have an opportunity ahead of us to provide some structure and some, and some expectations around that. The other piece is I think the more, the more grassroots and more like live in the, in the experiences of our kids right now is what can we do to engage parents in their students' own learning experiences right now that's happening in the classroom? So the, the short answer to the, to the broad question about platform, yes, platform, no, right? But then the more important question of what are we doing for our parents right now? So Principal Hill, can I ask you to come and help us with that? I, I failed to recognize these principals by the schools. Dr. Paul, who spoke to you earlier, was, is at North Davis. Principal Swanson is at Farmington High and Principal Hill is at Farmington Junior.
Thanks. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. So when it comes to parent involvement, it's very important to us. And what we like about the Summit platform specifically is that we can automatically generate a parent account that, that sends them text messages and emails when, when those due dates are coming up or when there's, there's a project that's due or how they did on a PFA. So we're pleased with the amount of communication that's available. And as at Farmington Junior, we chose just to push that out to parents and then they could opt out of it. And I, and I think that's been a valuable thing. We've also hosted several parent nights at, at some of those because we know people are busy. The attendance hasn't been awesome and we know that we need to provide one-on-one instruction to our parents at the same time. So at my school, we have six people that if a parent contacts us that's confused, we ask them to make an appointment to sit down and really get some training on the platform so that they can better help their student. It is different. You know, it's not a completion model, it's a mastery model and it's a growth model at the same time. And so we're, we're asking them to understand both the pedagogical shift and also a platform shift in, in having to navigate, you know, the Summit platform. But we also do the same thing for Canvas because, you know, Canvas provides its, its own amount of need to learn how to navigate. Also, I think on every one of our Summit schools, under our Summit platform on our website, we have a series of video frequently asked questions that we can often refer a parent to so they can get a quick response to, to whatever question they have. But without a doubt, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to do it without parent support.
Can I read a text message in response to part of that question that I got this afternoon? It's on my parent account. I get a text message on my phone every couple of days at 3:00 PM today. And I won't use names because we're streaming, but it says, your student, my own child, has a science project overdue. Help your student get back on track by asking what is particularly challenging about the project? So there's a prompt for parent engagement. And then it says a little explanation, projects and math units make up most of a student's course grades. Learn more here. And then I clicked on that link and it takes me to the explanation of how the system does the student grading. Now that's not going to work for everybody, but that little nudge, hey, remind your daughter where she's at or remind your son where she's at, help, help you, help your son or daughter in this way. We think that those types of quick text message-based communications will assist in the, you know, helping parents get, get connected with their students' learning.
Thanks. Sometimes I, I'm not sure whether some of the stress that we're hearing that were, that is being reported that our students are feeling is because their parents are feeling stressed and, and so it's reflective. It's kind of the thing in society is, is we get less civil. Is it because they're, they're seeing that at home as well? And so, so I just think it's really important for parents to feel very comfortable because if they're not feeling comfortable with the system, then, then our students probably are not either. And parents want to be able to be supportive. My second question, this is where you try to figure out how to lump a bunch of things into one so that then you really got five questions in. But can you just, all students learn in a different way and, and a criticism in education often, I think, has been about a focus more toward people that learn right-brained than left-brained and that kind of a thing. So especially as we move to emphasis on STEM kind of classes and, and away from some of the social sciences and, and things like that. So students also learn in different ways, some visually, some by hearing and things. Can, can you just give me some description of how people that have different styles of learning or, and maybe have to spend more time on a screen, how does that accommodate different people's learning styles?
Before we jump in on that, the STEM emphasis as well as social sciences and some of those other topics that you mentioned are a priority for us. You know, as we get into that, there's a lot, there's a lot of work to do in all areas. I'll let Ms. Cook answer that question. Just wanted to clarify.
So a prime feature of the Summit tool is that development of cognitive skills. So in the development of the cognitive skills, you do need content. And in that content upload, students are given choice. So that's a major feature of personalized competency-based learning is that students do have an opportunity to find what works for them. Some of our students have found, you know what, I really just do love a lecture. And I want to, I want to lecture and I want to take notes and that's how I want to learn. And teachers are trying to meet that need through workshops. Other resources, again, could be an article, could be a PowerPoint presentation, could be a, a video. I think all of us would recognize that with the popularity of TikTok, our students really love video and they really love it if it's less than a minute. We're not quite there yet in content upload that's under a minute, but there are many, many different ways that students can access that content and access it in a form that, that may meet their need or their learning style. Again, I think part of our challenge comes in that we need to spend more intentional time teaching students how to take notes, how to study and how to apply that learning. So we, re, reading an, an article, highlighting it and rereading has, is not, is proven to not be a good learning and study strategy. That highlight it, great, then ask yourself a question about it. Read the article, then summarize it. What are the main points? We need to, to continue and again, not just in schools that are implementing the Summit tool, but across all of our schools, we need to be better about giving students those skills to learn and to really learn how to study.
When the, you think about the Summit system, there's the power focus areas and the additional focus areas. And those are, are largely within the Summit system where they complete those things. And then there's this aspect of their learning experiences that, that Summit calls projects. And that's where the multi, multiple modes of delivery and skills really shine. You know, if you walk into a classroom where the kids are working on a project, you see kids doing all kinds of things with their hands and their ears and their mouths and their computers and their pencils and their paintbrushes and their, it, it, that's the opportunity for students to kind of set their path on the way they want to generate the learning and demonstrate their learning too. So if it weren't for the projects piece, you wouldn't have a, a full aspect of, of learning activities that addresses all those different modes that students need. With that project piece in, that's, that's the, the way that Summit really brings out those individual learning preferences that students have.
So I'm going to piggyback just so this kind of like sneaking an extra question in. What, it's not very sneaky. I just announced I'm doing it, so it's not sneaky. The interaction, so among the things, the way you learn is some, many by individual, just your own stuff. Some of the criticism has been the disconnection between the teacher and the student. Some people feel that, that hasn't done a lot for that, so I'm not connecting to other humans and I'm committing, connecting to a screen. And so that issue of, of my time where I'm talking to other people, including my, my classmates. And so I'm not just doing things on my own, but I'm interacting and, and sharing ideas and, and, and that's something that is, I, I, I guess I'd love to hear how, how there still is those opportunities under this platform that I'm interacting as well and, and it's a robust thing with interaction, human contact right now.
I'm going to have Dr. Paul come up on that one. Dr. Paul has done a lot of work on kind of what works in, in terms of learning and things like that. Studied a lot of the, you know, current modern research that's out there. Don't give us a research article here, Dr. Paul. But tell us what your teachers are doing to engage your students who, who learn in different ways.
First of all, we believe that every student is one adult away from, from learning and being successful. So we wholeheartedly believe in having our teachers and paraprofessionals with, with students. Teachers collaborating with each other has the highest effect size for learning. We want our teachers working together and utilizing their strengths, just like any basketball or football team would do. We feel like our English seven team utilizing their strengths will have the best effect on our seventh grade English students. In addition to that, we want students knowing where they're at and being able to set goals based on where they're at. Because we know all students learn at different rates and recognize that that's okay. I personally have a daughter who's three grade levels ahead in reading. And I have another one who's diagnosed with dyslexia, who's three grade, grade levels behind in reading. I, I get that they're going to learn at different rates. For that reason, they set individual goals and then those, and then they meet with me as, as their parent to assess their goals and see where they're at. With that, in the Summit learning platform, they are set up to set goals each day and meet with their mentor teacher and build that connection. That effect size is the second highest effect size as, as relates to student learning. And then I, I touched on the third highest effect size, which is response to intervention. It's identifying a need and responding to that as quickly as you can. Having the data available to us is, is key to that. We don't, we don't want to wait a week or a month to, to have those things. We want to be able to intervene as quickly as possible. To one of the earlier questions about, what about students that don't have a parent involved? I, I work at North Davis Senior High. We're the only title on secondary school in Davis School District. Over 50% of our students qualify for free introduced lunch. A lot of our parents, through no fault of their own, or a lot of our students through no fault of their own, don't have parents at home because they're working two, three jobs. Or it's a single year. We've had 11 parents pass away this year. So some kids have moved from a two-parent household to a one-parent household or a one-parent household to a no-parent household. As such, we need caring adults in the building. So having adults that care about students, having adults that believe all students can learn and giving them the time to do that. As we talk about high-stakes testing, I grew up in the area where, or the era where I took a test. And if I did great, great. And if I didn't, that was that. Now we want students, whether they're, they're having a good day or bad day, to be able to demonstrate that learning at, during the right time and not affected by if they broke up with their girlfriend that day or if they had a bad, bad night of rest. We want them to be able to demonstrate the learning. So we're always looking for the highest effect sizes. I recently went to a professional development conference and they said, in God we trust, for everything else, use data. I take that to heart as a, as a data nerd, where I want to try and implement the most effective practices in our building because smarter researchers than, smarter researchers than myself have identified what works best.
Thanks, Dr. Paul. Yeah, Principal Hill's going to add into that as well.
Ms. Phipps, I also heard you asking about the opportunities that kids have to collaborate with each other in, in real activities. And so I just wanted to give you a few examples of, of what they're doing in projects. You know, it's, it's been fascinating to, to watch these, these kids produce and collaborate. So I can give you a few examples. In our seventh grade English class, they hold a trial where they, you know, take a literary work and they will come up with an ethical, ethical question where they're going to practice their, their level of argument in order to either, you know, defend or prosecute.
in order to either, you know, defend or prosecute a, a specific character toward a question. It's a great, a great activity and really fun to see. Just recently, we had, we utilized a podcast series called, Ooh, You're in Trouble, right? Where, where eighth graders got to work with ethical questions about when is it okay to, to break rules versus not break rules? That, that culminated in, in an activity where they were able to have a Socratic seminar. So when, what that looked like, when you would walk into the room, a student might have their computer out to refer to their arguments. But they're, they're having a deep conversation where they're able to interact and ask each other deeper levels of questions of each other. You know, in science, you know, in seventh grade, they're, they're, they're researching systems of the body. And then putting together what they call a body book, which looks like, you know, a slide deck that, that's, that they're able to, to work on and they present it as a class. So I, I just wanted to, to share that, that those opportunities for really rich learning activities are, are still taking place on the platform.
Ms. Mumford?
Thank you. First, I just wanted to say thank you to parents because I think a lot of people shared some really vulnerable things. And it's, it's challenging. Like Dr. Two, and I've been a parent with you in the trenches for the last few years. And it's been a tough time to raise teenagers specifically and to be a parent. And so we, we really do feel like your experiences are valid and genuine and we're not trying to dismiss them. We're trying to get to the heart of, is, is it about a platform or a tool? Or are there other avenues that we really need to go deeper on? So I think these are important discussions. And, and one thought I've had while I've been sitting here is how many mental health supports, academic supports, and even IT supports that we do have for parents? And so please take that opportunity to talk to a teacher or a counselor or a principal. I know in our family, we sat down with the STS person at our child's school, that's the person over technology. And we put some limits on YouTube because it was a problem and it was a distraction. And, and there's tools to help parents. So please use those tools to be successful. And, and I hope that this conversation and then the subsequent work that happens after this helps us get to some good places. Because there's amazing instruction happening in our classrooms. So as, as far as my two questions, I wanted to start out with kind of defining whether Summit's a platform or a curriculum. I think that's kind of a common theme that I heard from parents is there's a little bit of a, a feeling that maybe whoever's designed Summit, and there's different perceptions of who's controlling Summit. But are they pushing some kind of agenda through the curriculum or the content or something? So just as a kind of a front to that, I visited dozens of classrooms in recent weeks randomly. Showed up with, you know, teachers weren't preparing lessons, knowing a board member was coming. And I saw lots of amazing direct instruction, collaborative learning, really excellent things happening. And my experience in talking with those teachers is that they're vetting the PFAs. They're, it takes a lot of time and they're trying to keep up with that. But they're looking at those things, they're loading their own stand, content that meets our Utah standards. But will you kind of just explain the difference between a curriculum and a platform? Because I think that's a, something that I had to really spend some time on.
So Ms. Cook is going to talk about the district efforts and clarify the, the platform curriculum question.
Right.
And then we'll have Principal Swanson also share what his teachers are doing. Because they, four years ago, started out on this, this journey of, we need to, we need to get, make this content our own. And so he has some great examples of what teachers have done.
And then when you, while you're kind of discussing that, kind of speak to why some schools maybe have chosen to use Summit? What gives them that latitude to make a curriculum or a platform choice?
So the Summit learning platform is a personalized competency based tool. It is a tool that also houses curriculum. And so within the tool, the tool has been designed to meet those standards of personalized competency based learning. And so within the tool, there are rubrics. And the rubrics are very clearly aligned to all of the cognitive skills to allow a student and a parent to know exactly where a student is at, where they need to grow to, what the expectation is. As well as gives them opportunity to personalize that learning through that content upload and in those rich projects. That's its primary function is that tool and the reporting out of data. As all of the principals who've spoken here tonight talk about, the, the primary feature that educators love about the tool is the rich access to immediate data so that instructional adjustments can be made and, and do that in a timely manner. It also houses curriculum. We have a choice. We can use the curriculum that Summit has put into. We, they do a curriculum update every single spring. And every spring, we can, we download it, we look at it, we say, yes, we really love this new project that they've added. We want to add that into what we call the district base curriculum. Or no, we don't really like that project, we don't have to do that. So we do use a combination of things that are in the Summit platform that were developed by curriculum directors for Summit. But we also use a lot of things that our district creates as well. And we download the district base curriculum and my team goes through and vets the district curriculum. We make recommendations to schools. We pull teams together during the summer to say, here are the new things that have been released. We think you'll really like this, you'll want to take a look at this. We don't advise that our teachers go in and just download the new base curriculum because then that restarts the platform for them and then they would have to go in and rebuild things. So we prefer to have the district curriculum department review and vet, make recommendations and pull those teacher teams together to help build that across the entire platform for all of our schools.
I love this question. Give me the cutoff when you want me to shut up because I can go forever on this one.
Okay.
When I first saw Summit, a couple of handful of years ago, Summit was very lockstep. Their curriculum came in their package, their LMS, and it had to be brought in lockstep to the school. And it wasn't something that worked for Davis School District and it definitely wasn't something that worked for me at that point. It wasn't until a few years after that, that a pretty prominent female educator, actually named as the top female educator by Newsweek in the United States of America, working for Harvard, came back to me and said, you've got to take another look back into Summit. They've changed and it's a different platform and there's different availability and flexibility there. It's at that time that I went back in and looked again and started bringing that back to our team, bringing that back through the district. Again, working with my community council and showing them what that is. But that, what, what Belinda spoke of with vetting, our teachers are held accountable to the Utah State Curriculum and the desk standards for the Davis School District. Now, have they, do we sometimes see something that the teacher hasn't gone and seen every single thing? And, and maybe they need to go back and pull, absolutely. But anybody in this room can sit down with any teacher in my building anytime and say, remove this off the platform. And they can show you that they can pull that out of the platform regardless of who put it on. They can also go in and add anything to that platform. So our teachers do have direct control over what curriculum and what resources are going to be used in their classroom. A great example of this, when we're talking about the PFAs and the assessments. Two of my physics teachers were really disappointed our first year because they said all of their physics science tests were written by chemistry teachers. I have no idea how they know that. But those two teachers, Ms. McMurray and Ms. Nielsen, went through and rewrote the entire test bank for everything in physics. So they knew that it was with a physics viewpoint rather than what they saw as a chemistry viewpoint. Those teachers have full access to make any changes within the curriculum, within the resources, as well as within any of the assessments that our students are taking.
And we don't have, you know, we, we, we will have instances when that content that is delivered either through Summit or is teacher created or some other source isn't perfect and we'll need to make those changes. The, the system itself through the parent portal can give a view to the parents of everything that the student sees as well in terms of delivered content. And so if there's a concern, have, we encourage parents to, to approach the teacher. Hey, I was reading the article, there's this thing in it, I don't, that kind of conversation, we're open to that conversation. And we're knowing how much flexibility we have in the design of the content. Should address most of the concerns and allow us to troubleshoot individual pieces of curriculum that people are concerned about.
And we've done that numerous times this year.
And, and talking again to parents, if parents are seeing that, please contact us. We have had several times that I've read something and thought as a parent, that might not be something I would be comfortable with an essay on. That we've gone in and we've immediately had those pulled out of, out of the resources for students. That, a lot of that was in our first couple of years. But that's, again, one of those parent involvement pieces that we want to hear from parents with what their concerns are. If it's something tied to our desk standards very closely, that's a conversation. If it's not, it's pretty easy to meet the parents' needs and desires on that topic or that curriculum.
The best way for us to resolve that, I'm sorry.
No, you're okay.
The best way for us to resolve that though is if the concern comes like this. In, in this particular class, there's this particular piece of content for my student and that's my concern. Not a general concern about liberal encroachment of ideals or something that was reposted and reposted and reposted. We, we are at our very best at troubleshooting and problem solving when we can very specifically identify the problem that we're trying to solve.
I love that. So there's a lot of flexibility and responsibility for teachers. I guess one kind of follow up question and then I'll ask my second one is, what, moving forward, because I think we've learned a lot in recent months as we have had this deeper discussion on Summit. How can we support PLCs at schools with those test bank, you know, where they've rewritten the physics content? Is, is that available to other schools or how are we? I saw some amazing things happening in the English department at Farmington Junior. So I want to make sure that those resources, somebody else doesn't have to replicate that kind of thing. What's the collaboration like between schools so that we get kind of equity and, and create resources?
So when we, we have to create some content, so Summit Learning doesn't create Utah history content. So when we built the Utah history content and other content, we built it, so it can, it's implemented in Summit and in Canvas. And so that's one thing that we're doing, as well as we have lots of administrators and teachers who are curious about what does really personalized competency based learning look like when you implement the Summit platform? And what are the things that we could also use? We own all the curriculum, it's not proprietary. So anything that they have released and anything we've created or changed or added is completely ours. And we can put into any of our Canvas courses. And we do have some things that were like, that's a great project, let's go ahead and let's add that into other content areas and into other platforms that may be used across the district.
Okay, thank you. For my second question, I, I think we were reading each other's minds, but I had the same feeling that we need to do some kind of independent study. And I appreciated that you cited that a couple of times in your document. I saw, I'll just read a couple of patterns that I saw as I went back through all the parent emails I've received. Standards based grading, implementation issues, logistics of the school day, appropriate screen time use, pacing, workload, grading period structures, teacher capacity, having to use multiple platforms, mental impacts on our educators and parents. So I think those are all the kinds of, in my mind, a survey's not a vote, yes or no on Summit. I think we want to kind of tease out some of these really deeper issues and figure out what we need that will benefit our Summit and our non-Summit schools moving forward. Will you kind of speak to what your thoughts are on that independent study process?
Yes. The data that we shared in the, in the Common Concerns document with the board is, is all data that we're watching very closely. And we're confident that it is good data. It is, it is also data that we've collected across the district. It's learning experience, particularly the survey data is learning experience data. Graduation data, GPA data, ACT data. All of those things are, we're using those as kind of a barometer and a sense of, are we, you know, are our students falling behind? Are our students getting ahead? Or are they right where we would expect them to be? None of those questions that we asked in the climate survey say, do you like Summit or not? They also don't say, do you like Canvas or not, or do you like? But they're, they're generating a general sense of the student's sense of well-being and connection to the school in climate and the evaluation survey. So I presented those here with the full acknowledgement and understanding that the question of Summit is, is not going to be answered in, in its entirety by the data that was shared. That's, that's our sense of, yeah, is the sky falling in terms of student outcomes? Absolutely not. Our students are attaining at their levels. There might be some individual students who we need, we need to help and we need to work on. The intention on the, on the independent study is to expand upon the information that we already have with a couple of different things. Number one, to make that a very specific questions about, are we attaining the benefits that a learning platform like Summit or other personalized learning efforts will bring to us? Things that aren't going to be measured on an ACT day or based on graduation outcomes. Are students, do they have flexibility in their learning? Are they developing competencies in the skills that listed in the portrait of a graduate? Those ones, what we would traditionally think of as non-academic but are very, that have a place in our academic environment. We want to include surveys in this study. We want to include really professionally well-designed surveys that have a broad base of responses so that we know we're getting a sense of, of community feel. Likely that survey will not be a simple one question survey of, do you like it or not? We, we want to get to the heart of, are we accomplishing what we set out to accomplish or not? And what are the things that we need to be attending to in your experience so that we can make sure that the, the student experience is protected? So surveys of parents, surveys of students, surveys of staff, that'll be a critical part of it. We'll be looking at existing data, have someone with a, a really independent but professional lens come in and look at our, you know, the data that I shared is general, you know, high level data to dive in and look, school by school to look and see where are our points of greatest opportunity and where are we there? This type of an analysis is going to take some time. This isn't the kind of thing, we're just going to turn around in a month and have a report and then know exactly what we should do. This is, this will be more of an effort than an event. But we'll, we'll do it with the intention of really informing not just Summit, but our efforts with respect to Portrait of a Graduate and, and personalized learning.
Great. And, and I think that's important to note that even though an independent study could take a while. I remember watching it with, when we did it with Advantage Math or some other places where we've contracted for an independent review of something. It is time intensive, but we can still make a lot of improvements and adjustments. And I'm already seeing that happening as an outcome of this discussion. I'm going to take the liberty of one last question since I was at the end and then a for looping back. It feels like overwhelmingly standards based grading is one of the challenges. I mean, I think that drives a lot of the anxiety. I think it drives a lot of the, it's a, a very different way from how I grew up, being graded, how I'm even being graded right now in university classes. It's, it's just a different model. And so that's not Summit specific. What's, how can we, what are your thoughts on how can we do better? Because that's going to be affecting, I think, schools and parents and students across the district as, as we move to that model from Portrait of a Graduate. And, and then how does that fit into a school's preparedness to take on Summit? Maybe that needs to be one of the indicators is that they're more embedded or accustomed to the standards based grading. That's just something that I've noticed on visits.
This will take a little bit more discussion than just what I'm going to share because I'd like Ms. Cook to chime in on this too. But there's one aspect of your question that kind of is very Summit specific. And that's relative to the current year term grades. The grade distributions that we have in the data packet are end of year term grades and, and intentionally reported that way. Because in the Summit system, the, the grading period is a year. And so the students have the opportunity in the Summit system to develop those competencies and demonstrate, I know this, I know this, I've passed that standard, I have that cognitive skill throughout the entire year. Now, that doesn't mean that we do away with terms. There's still the expectation that students remain on pace. And there's still the expectation that teachers are awarding a term grade every year or every term. But there are lots of students who are not complete in their learning for the learning that was intended to be on pace by the end of first term. And those students are labeled in the Summit system as not being on track because they're behind the pace line. If we're doing the philosophy right, that should not be a point of high stress and anxiety and accountability for our students. The biggest challenge that we have right now is that when we report a grade, that creates a point of high stress and anxiety and accountability for our students. And it always has, and it probably always will as long as we're putting letters on transcripts. The, the way that it works in our schools now is those students that are behind are getting an incomplete or, or, you know, a grade that doesn't reflect where they would normally be. Now, in a traditional setting, the students would, the last week of the term, be doing all their projects and hurrying up and getting their deadlines. And we've all seen it in the lives of every high school and junior high school student, the last week of the term. They do so much more work the last week of the term than they do the rest of the term because they're up against that deadline. In, in this, the very Summit specific part of your question, that deadline doesn't really exist with the stakes that it does in the traditional setting. And so many students say, I'll just work on it in my pace, and then we'll get to it. Um, we don't want to create an environment where students are neglecting their responsibility to stay on pace. And that's a little bit of a tightrope walk between the philosophy and the expectations, because we don't want to lower expectations for our students. But the reality of it is, we have more students in the middle of the year that are still working on tasks. Grade change forms, once a student attains that knowledge and understanding, are, are implemented. And so these principles will tell you, the, the principal has to sign off on every grade change form. And if there's snowing grades, grade change forms in, in giant snowstorms at these schools. Because once a student makes their progress and demonstrates their knowledge, that inappropriately, that, I shouldn't say inappropriately, that grade that was tied to pace will then be switched and tied to understanding. So our grade distribution, um, at the end of the year is a reflection of student understanding. Our grade distribution right now is a hybrid of student understanding, but it's got this other layer of pace on top of it, which is a big challenge and something that we're committed to working on. And so in this conversation, I don't want to say, oh, yeah, it's, it's just the philosophy. It's, it's really not. There's a, there's a very specific pace conversation where the two systems aren't aligned super well, and we need to go about that. The first thing we need to do is communicate clearly and better to our students and parents what that means at the end of the term. Because if that, if the anxiety and stress of receiving that lower grade based on my pace is, is creating a situation in my life where I'm frustrated and I don't like school, and those kinds of negative effects, we have to be able to head those off. So communicate very clearly, and then work on the system so that the system itself clarifies that for, for the students. Um, Ms. Cook, I'd like, can you chime in on that a little bit more? Now, that, that, on the knowledge of, like, the standards-based grading side of things that aren't Summit-specific?
Just kind of in light, I think Summit is kind of showing us a precursor of some of the challenges that we have when we go standards-based grading, because it really systematizes it for everybody. So, um, I, I mean, our, that's the end game, right? Like, we're working towards that with all of our schools, kind of similarly at different paces, because we're all in different places. But just talk about, a little bit about, like, do retakes, how do retakes fit into things? Are kids not going to be prepared for college? Some of those things that we're hearing, how do those match up with standards-based grading, and how are we helping schools get there?
So we're emerging from a system that focused on completion and compliance. And we're trying to shift to, when a student has an A, we know exactly what that means. So arbitrarily, we also want to move from that grade being arbitrary of, what does this really mean? Did a student get an A because they really know the material? Or did the student get the A because they did have gaps in their learning, because they are showing to learn the material, but they were allowed to do extra credit, and that extra credit was in no way related to what we expected students to learn according to the desk standards? So our hope through standards-based grading and through competency-based system is that that's a guarantee. And it's a guarantee to the student that I really know these standards and I have these skills, and I have demonstrated that. And I haven't been tied to, well, if you didn't get it on the first try, or you didn't get it in first term, then you continue to be penalized. So one of the examples that I like to share is that if a student gets an F, let's say they just get a forty-nine percent on a first assessment of a hundred percent. It doesn't really matter what they do on the next two or three assessments, even if they get an A, the student's never going to get an A. And that is a demonstration of completion. The student took the assessment, the first assessment, they may not have understood the quadratic equation. But through the course of the rest of the term, perhaps through the rest of the year, they get to the endpoint and they have a firm understanding of it. In our current system, without standards-based grading, without extra credit, without retakes, without any of those scaffolds that we put in place for students, that student will never receive an A, because they were penalized for learning. And we want to remove the penal, penalty for learning. We want to value the learning the very, very most, because that's the A number-one skill that students need to carry with them into their future, is that they can learn and they know how to learn. And when we continue to penalize that on the first attempt, and I failed, then I can never make that up. So the question of retakes, it's a question to teachers, it's a question to parents, it's a question to kids. And, and I'm not suggesting that we give endless retakes. I think that we can place boundaries around that. Uh, we need to place boundaries around it sometimes for teachers and that, that workload, particularly in a school that may not be implementing a robust tool that allows those retakes to happen automatically if, if it's demanding teacher time. But, okay, you took that first quiz. You clearly do not understand the quadratic equation and how we use it and when it's applied. So let's do some reteaching. You need to do some additional learning, and instead of bringing a box of tissues, or instead of bringing some dry erase markers to earn extra credit, no, we really want you to learn that. We're going to put in that time, we're going to do some individualized instruction, we're going to reteach as a whole class. We're going to have some peer support and have a peer who understands it really well, who may be able to explain it better to you than I can as the older adult. And then we're going to allow you that opportunity to take a retake. Again, in some cases, that does promote some procrastination. That's human nature. Again, I think that a, a teacher can implement a system in their classroom to allow for retakes, but also put a boundary around, no, you don't get to take the retake unless you've had an opportunity to do some additional learning, to do some additional practice, to get some additional feedback. So, again, valuing the learning over, here's the, the one and done in that assessment. Our, our, our current biggest challenge is that we have a system that is points-based, and that's how the algorithm was built thirty years ago. And as we transition, we need different algorithms, and that's a, a really, really big lift that's going to take time. And it's going to take a lot of people to help us do that. That's what's attractive about Summit. That's what is attractive about another system called Empower. Um, there, there's lots of systems out there that are moving towards, uh, standards-based, competency-based platform. None of them are perfect. We hold a seat on the state advisory board for, uh, personalized competency-based learning in the state. And that's one of the things that we discuss on a monthly basis, is building a system that truly is efficacious for personalized competency-based learning, and that helps a student move towards competency. And the current future is that one of the pieces of data we really want to pull from the system is the cognitive skills. And where does a student start? What's the baseline of a student starting with that ability of, the skill of inquiry? Here was the student's baseline when they started in fourth grade at Farmington Elementary. And as they proceed and go through that twelfth grade, what is that student's trend line? What's that student's growth? What, what are the evidences that that student can share with us through their projects of how they've grown through inquiry? Or how they've gone through, how they've grown through presentations and listening and speaking? That's data that is in the Summit system that we need to be more intentional of pulling out to be able to, uh, compile that. It's not anything that we have in our current Encore and MyDSD system. But as we look towards professional skills, as we look towards student futures, those are the things that we're really, really focused on. If you do a review of all of the desk standards in all of our content areas, you will notice that they are all skill-based, that these are the skills that we want students to be able to master, and that the content becomes a vehicle to master those skills. And a standards-based system assesses a student's skill on both the professional skills and skills related to content. And we want to give students multiple opportunities to demonstrate that learning and have an opportunity to continue to learn and grow.
Mr. Eckerstein, we're coming back to you. We're going to have one question, each of us one. And we'll go as long as we need to go.
Yeah, I want to, I want to follow up, Ms. Cook, about, um, what we've just been talking about. Because of, um, so many texts that I have received, emails that I have received on, on that very subject. And, and what parents are telling us is that, um, rather than achieving competency through passing the test, and, and I'm just guessing here, that we, we are saying that they, they have achieved competency once they have passed the test.
Not necessarily a test. So that demonstrated competency can come in many forms. A test is just one. We currently are engaging, so projects are deeply embedded in the Summit tool. We are also moving that direction across all of our content areas and with all of our teachers. We have formed a relationship with the Buck Institute, and we have several cohorts of teachers receiving training with their support and help in what does really robust problem, project-based learning and problem-based learning look like? And how do we incorporate that into our, our instruction and make that a, a robust piece and a main piece of that? And we have a waiting list next year for multiple cohorts, because teachers want to do this. They want to make learning relevant, they want to make it engaging, and they want to develop students' skills so that they have both those professional skills and the academic skills as they leave our system.
That's good, and I think the training part of it is, is very important. But to, to continue on that, uh, what I am hearing from parents is that their son or daughter is telling them to get through Summit, to get a good grade, to pass. I study cram, I pass the test, and then I forget it, and I move on to the next section. So I, I just wanted you to address that.
I, I think that's also a little developmental for a teenager. Having raised some teenagers, I think that that's, sometimes they have a long, a hard time playing the long game, because they don't think past lunch some days. Um, I, I think that goes back to the teacher clarity and that effective teacher practice, that we're helping students make connections that students wouldn't normally make on their own. The reason you need to study, read these articles, watch these videos, and take the, uh, PFA and the AFA is to gain knowledge that you can then apply in the project that you're going to work in, this unit of study that we're accomplishing. I don't know that students always feel that they don't know, understand the connection. It's a box to check. So the AFA and the PFA, those are two boxes to check, and the project is another box to check, and they don't see how they're all interrelated. And, um, we can all certainly do better at helping make those connections for students.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Tanner?
Yeah, it just seems like the, the training and understanding for each group, for the parents, for the teachers, and for the students is an area that really needs a lot of work for our district right now. Um, my question is about, um, I appreciate that, um, we're going to do a professional, uh, independent evaluation of, of these programs. And I think that also my, as, so we do this one evaluation, that's great. But I see as an ideal to work towards having consistent evaluation and review and response to, um, continued challenges that, that are with this. What, what would that look like in your mind?
Well, I have to say that I think the Teaching and Learning Department dropped the ball on this early on, that we weren't as supportive, um, which breaks my heart a lot, because our motto in my department is, um, service and support. And we didn't provide all of the service and support that we could have to Farmington High School as we began this. We are going to make this part of our regular curriculum review. So anytime we adopt a curriculum and anytime we develop, uh, courses, every year, we ask teachers, please give us feedback. In almost all of our content areas, we have an email box dedicated specifically just to that content area, and the teachers can give us feedback and comments anytime. So about this time every year, we start compiling all of that data that we have received from teachers, the things that are working, what's not working, things that they like to see, um, whether it is a, a feature or a functionality, and we address those. We bring teachers together every summer and have them work in grade level or content area teams and work to help us, uh, do, make those revisions. So just as an example, when we built the learning first system for elementary, and, uh, we build it fast. We were one term ahead of all of the teachers in building that system, because we knew that teachers were going to need content as we lived through that first year of the pandemic. Um, we were getting comments all of the time, and we, over the last two summers, have done the same thing. Brought in, um, our teachers, they've taken the feedback, they've given their own, we've made changes to the system. And, and that's just a part of our regular cycle. Um, we did that last year with Summit, particularly with the content in the seventh, eighth, and ninth grade. Brought in our curriculum teams, brought in teachers, went through the curriculum, what do we need to modify? What do we need to pull? What do we need to add? Where are the gaps and holes in, uh, helping students demonstrate proficiency and competency? And where's the gap in the holes in meeting the standards? And so we just intend that we will make that a part of the regular cycle. Uh, we did that, again, also with our elementaries that came on board. We went through the curriculum and, uh, gave, um, advice and direction on some of the things in the elementary that we would, uh, change in the district-based curriculum. So it is now officially a part of every summer, spring and summer curriculum review.
And how can we utilize the, you know, the professional evaluation cycle will have a, an end to it. It won't be, it won't be short. But we'll learn. What are the kinds of questions we should be asking our community? What are the kinds of experiences we should be looking for for our students? What are we missing? What do we need to be paying attention to? What are our academic out, what are our academic measures that are going to tell us about these, um, these cognitive skills that aren't typically measured by ACT, uh, you know, how are we developing? So our, our intent is in, in asking for and utilizing a professional service for this the first time, is to inform our ongoing practice. Now, it might not result in a formal annual report or anything like that, but it will result in the kind of boots-on-the-ground information to help us really address some of the issues. And here's, the reality is that there are students who are not having the kind of an experience that they should have. And we have to acknowledge that, we have to accept it. And the people who think that, those kids that are having that experience, they're not, we don't, we're not discrediting them. Okay? We're saying, we have a system that we think works, we have a system that we are, um, intentional about supporting. And we also want to make sure that what we're doing is addressing any of those individual circumstances that arise. So the ongoing evaluation of the system, the data, the surveys, that kind of piece, that will happen. And that will happen, and the, you know, the, the, the formal one that we'll work with, uh, with an external entity on will take a lot of time. But starting like yesterday, we're working on, and before that, and even now, we're working on the individual situations. What we need from our parents is very individual, specific details about what's going on at the level at which we can address it.
Thank you.
Questions I've had have been answered. Ms. Stevenson?
Well, this isn't my question, but this is my character and my children's. If we had received an F, my children and myself would have all flipped out. So as you're adjusting or making changes, um, could we be a little gentler on that F? Maybe an I for incomplete or something? I would have just freaked. So, um, I, I'm one of those students, and I've heard from a, a lot of parents about that too, so just food for thought.
That's already in the works.
Oh, thank you.
We're working on that program.
Thank you. An F just makes a statement that I don't even like to think about, so, um. Uh, but my question was, I was, I was, um, as I read this packet that you prepared, it said that no schools are slated to go on Summit this coming year.
Not for next year.
Could you just kind of speak to, um, how, if a school decides to go on Summit or is inquiring about it, is there a district-wide implementation? Or, I, I know Rich, I mean, Farmington High had to kind of go out on their own, but will we be establishing a protocol for throughout? But could you?
Yes, we will.
Address that?
The, the system, that, that, that district expectation and like a very structured method hasn't existed. Now, that doesn't mean that the district has not been involved. We've, the, our school leaders, as they've looked at Summit, these ten schools that use it, have very much involved Teaching and Learning Department, school directors. We've been supportive of their efforts. Um, our structured plan for future implementation will include training, will include, um, some work on the personalization and standards philosophy. Because if we get a tool in a school that doesn't have the philosophy, then the tool's going to misfire. And so there will be some work on that. There will be lots of com- And so there will be some work on that. There will be lots of opportunities for community input. We don't know exactly what that looks like yet, but we'll be, we'll be generating that expectation beyond a single discussion in a, in a single setting with a few parents. So we'll be, we'll be outlining that process for our schools. Our school directors will help us oversee that. We want to make sure it's in the, in the realm of possibility for for schools so we're not creating an undue burden. But also, just a couple of checkpoints to make sure that schools have done the appropriate training, the appropriate feedback cycles, that their staff is ready, that their parents and their students are ready, and then, and then go and seek this, the tools.
So staff will be a big part of that in the implementation.
Absolutely. We can't do it without them.
Ms. Phipps?
We're, we get a lot of feedback from many who feel that that this should be an opt-in program versus a mandatory for all in a school. And so my questions pertain to, my question, my question pertains to, which will result into, is about that. Because I've had feedback that at schools that, that it's opt-in, but that the choices are not there, that really you're forced into taking, if you want to take certain classes, then you have to have opted in. And so the limitations of what classes I can take. And so, so with that, I want to kind of, so there's a hidden question within the question that I want to ask, which is, then could you give us what would be the disadvantages to having people be able to make an option, opt-in versus the full school being on that?
Most of our schools right now, when they implement Summit, they implement it, you know, we hesitate to say Summit School. It's a school using Summit. Because Summit does not exist in every class. And there are lots of classes in all of our schools that are implementing Summit that are not housed in Summit. And some are. Most of our schools that are implementing it, if a student's taking that class and that class is at that school housed in Summit, that's the option that the student has. There are, it's a complicated question about how to, about the drawbacks of having an opt-in. And I asked Principal Hill to maybe give this some preliminary thought, anticipating that this question would come. So maybe I'll ask Principal Hill to come and just share some perspectives, knowing that this, it's not the kind of a question that we can answer in this setting in the three or four minutes on the question. But just to say, this is something that we thought about and we've run into some roadblocks and some, some implementation challenges when we think about what it could look like with students having two different learning platforms in a school.
So thank you for the question. And it is a really complex answer. I did email some notes to Ms. Tanner today that she may share with the rest of the board. But really, the first thing that it would lead to, just by providing an opt-in and opt-out, while, while you're adding a choice, there's a huge opportunity cost to that choice. That would actually effectively limit student parent choice for courses that they want to have. I've been doing master scheduling for a little over 10 years and I've done it at three different schools. And so this gets really kind of, there's a lot of minutia here. But what it comes down to is, is the ability to be able to off, when we run a master schedule, we need to balance it so that we have the lowest class size possible while maximizing, you know, the, the opportunities for students to get into the courses that they want to take. And the reality of the matter is, you know, my school, we have 54 teachers. You know, I only have two seventh-grade science teachers. We run 10, 10 sections of seventh grade, you know. And so, you know, for the simplicity of it, if half kids opted in, half kids opted out, you know, we'd have five sections of one teacher on Summit and another teacher off Summit. The implications of that would be that we would have to funnel all of those kids into that one teacher and they would not be able to take other singleton courses. You know, we are only able to offer band one period, which is a huge program at my school. We're only able to offer certain art classes. And more concerningly, you know, our applied skills classes for our special ed students and also our team top classes. So we've effectively reduced down the opportunity for those students to be able to take the courses that they actually need or want to be in by offering this opt-in model. So there's, there, that can go down a lot of different avenues. Happy to talk to anybody about it because master scheduling is my thing. It would also, you know, heavily impact our teachers' ability to collaborate. If, you know, take those two seventh-grade science teachers, that same example, what are they to be collaborating on in terms of if their approach is, is going to be different, given, you know, the platform that they're on? Well, what, what are they really supporting each other in? My school, our PLCs are very strong, especially in our core areas. And something that Summit has provided is, is an extraordinary opportunity for our teachers to collaborate. Dividing them out is going to, is going to get rid of the benefits of, of that collaboration and also further isolate teachers and where they're going to struggle. The, the next thing is, of course, resources in, in terms of human capital. And when, when you have an opt-in, opt-out model, we, that ratio of opt-in, opt-out could change from year to year, over years timed. And so we would have to assign teachers based on what, what that opt-in, opt-out would be. And it could be, you know, as simple as, you know, 45 kids want to be in a, in a Summit class, well, 23 don't, you know. And now we've created inequity in the, inequity in the system because we have a, a class that's over, overburdened and one that, you know, that is smaller. And again, this, this all goes into, into greater detail. Also, opting a student out of Summit, out of a platform, wouldn't be opting them out of PCBL or Portrait of the Graduate. And so the question then becomes, well, how are we, we return back to the challenge that we were at just a few years ago in trying to help have a learning platform, in this case Canvas, function in a, in a standards-based model, which teachers got really overburdened trying to make that work, and that's why they sought out Summit. And then also, just the division of school faculty, that you're going to, we're going to take these departments and create, you know, these two separate approaches, let's say, or, or different functions on platform. And, and again, that impacts morale and, and teacher isolation. And then the last thing is, this is an elementary, this is a four through 12 program. And I've never been an elementary principal, but I would only imagine what that would do in an elementary school in trying to provide those two different options.
Thanks, Principal Hill. And the reason why we share those is not necessarily to say, you know, it's not, the opt-out option is not as elegant a solution as it seems at first glance. It doesn't mean it would never work. It just means that there were, there are some serious complexities to that kind of a, of an approach that would allow, that would, it would, it would make it really difficult, I think, for our schools to keep their finger on the pulse of what needs to happen in their efforts with PCBL and Summit. So, thanks, Principal Hill.
I think that's, it's been really helpful. But so you seem to have given me that the option is in or out, not something that's between.
Well, I don't understand your question.
That either we do Summit or we don't do Summit, but not some doing it and some not.
Well, I think that in terms of the way that we're designing, we've implemented it right now, it would be very challenging to go to a school that hasn't implemented Summit program in some courses, because you'll, you'll have other courses that aren't currently Summit. But to go and say to that school, we now have the opportunity for some students to use this platform at their choice and some students to use this platform at their choice. We don't have that kind of opportunity for that in our other programs. You know, we don't have students in a health class saying, you know, I want to use this other textbook instead of the one that's adopted for the program, or I want to have my bell schedule look like this, even though the school bell schedule looks like that. There are some, there are some systemic challenges to that type of some in, some out approach. Now, I say that with some caution because we don't have a school that's all in, all out. Walk into our schools and we'll find you a class that doesn't have Summit as the backbone of that class. So in, in using the terminology of all in, all out, we just have to be a little bit careful.
Yeah, just to, that I, I see to some level that we have schools that are offering AP, IB, concurrent enrollment. There's already a lot of things that are happening in, in and out of some. So, so I'm just trying to weigh all this and make it make sense to me.
Ms. Mupper?
Thank you.
Yeah, this is not a personal question, but I think I'd be remiss if I didn't reflect kind of this recurring theme that I heard from multiple patrons. Will you just speak, and I think Dr. Hill brought it up really well when he mentioned resources. We know the Summit platform itself is free. There's not a subscription fee per student like some other maybe learning platforms or software programs that we use. But there's definitely, you know, human resources and, and support that we're applying to it as a district. Will you just speak a little bit to the contract that we're in with Summit, what, how that fits in with state code and privacy and kind of more those, just kind of cursory things that we haven't gotten into but are important to a lot of people to make sure they understand that we're protecting children's privacy and, and those kinds of things through the contract?
Yeah, I'll, I'll address three aspects of that. And then if you need more information, let me know. The first is the contracting. We do enter into an agreement with Summit and that agreement basically says that we will utilize their tool and that they will provide the services that they provide. That contract is, it's, you know, we retained a copy of it. It's been reviewed by our legal and it is in, it is in accordance with other types of contracts we use. We are not locked in. If Summit ever stops being the tool of choice for us in our efforts and we have the opportunity to, to walk away. The cost is legitimately zero dollars. We don't write a check to Summit. We don't write, we don't make any payments to Summit or any of their subsidiaries. Initially, in the beginning, when Summit was kind of getting its, off the ground, there was a, a requested assessment component. And that assessment was a cost item. Before we implemented that item, that that assessment, they've removed that request and nested the assessment within their own system at no cost to school districts. And so we were not required to or have we engaged in any expenses related to the assessment that was from early on. This was like from four years ago. But as it stands right now, our agreement is a no-cost agreement. There are some human capital costs associated with implementing Summit. I mean, we work here and thank you for paying us every month. We appreciate that. But the, the, the work of our teachers, which is a cost to the district, and the work of our principals, which is a cost, the work of our curriculum team, which is a cost, is a cost that we would incur anyway. And so we would consider those in-kind costs. Our existing teaching and learning staff and the team that's working on personalized learning across the district has been tasked with, with Summit. We haven't brought on additional staff for just Summit support. And so all, all costs which exist and are real costs are ones that the district would be incurring anyway on the initiatives that we have going on. Regarding data privacy, that is a, a significant concern we've heard from many, several in our community. Our data sharing agreement with Summit outlines some specific data points that we share with Summit and then outlines the data points that Summit retains based on this, what data is generated within the system. So students completing work and their progress and things like that. The data that we share with Summit is, we've negotiated that data contract with them to be the minimal amount of data necessary for the, for the system to be functional. So if they need, if they, if this, if they need the student name, which they do, we give them the student name. And other data that is there just, just to make it so that it works in our system. The data, the data system that Summit has is guarded by their own internal data privacy provisions, which were disclosed to us and agreed upon when we entered into the contract. Their data privacy provisions meet and even exceed the standard of many other, most other educational software products that are provided. It is very much an industry standard with respect to data privacy. And there's a, a little bit of misinformation around the governance and who owns Summit. Summit is owned by a foundation and the foundation receives funding from several different places. One of the sources of that funding is the Chan Zuckerberg Foundation. That, there's some misinformation about Summit belonging to Meta or Facebook and that Meta and Facebook have access to all the, all the data within the Summit system. That is not true. We've, we've received assurances on that. It's part of the data contract. If ever they violate their data contract with us, we'll, we'll, we'll consider that a breach of contract and we'll leave. But we're very confident that our data, our student data is secure. It meets all of the data security standards and the sharing agreement is very much in line with other data sharing agreements that have been used for years in our system to deliver products to our students.
Ms. Ackersley, we're back to you.
Oh, sorry.
Ms. Ackersley.
Yeah, when we were talking about training teachers, staff and faculty, another question came to my mind that I, I wanted to ask. I don't, I think it should be an easy one to answer, but is there an opportunity for teachers who have been asked to use Summit and have been trained on it, is there opportunities for them to meet and give feedback and even complain about what's happening to them, their students, their, their classroom, without there being any negative consequences to them for having given those complaints?
Yes, we have a really open communication. I've been invited out to several schools and to several teachers for them to give me their complaints or their wish lists or their concerns. And we try to address those as possible. Actually, in the last year, I've actually had more phone calls and asked to come out and meet with more content PLCs on, please don't take this away. It's, it's finally helping me do what I've always wanted to do as an educator to make sure that my students really are learning and gaining skills.
And the fear of retribution for raising that concern might be a legitimate feeling that our teachers have. But I would hope that, that, that they would still come with the concern. We, we, raising a concern is not non-compliance and it's not insubordination. We don't treat it that way. We, we never have. And we, and we don't intend to have negative consequences for a teacher who says, I need some help with this. This isn't working and here's why. If a teacher has a concern and doesn't raise it, then that's more of a disservice to our students than if they raise it. So i- if they feel like that retribution is out there, I would encourage them, assure them as, as a board member perhaps, I can assure them as a member of the superintendency, that if there are negative ramifications for simply raising a concern, that we would address that administratively with the people that implement those, those ramifications. That has not been my observed experience, but I don't want to discredit the concern, but just, I would assure those folks with that concern, that that's not a part of our practice in Davis School District, that one of our goals is to have an open line of communication with our teachers who are engaged in the greatest profession on earth and bring our folks into that conversation without fear of retribution. Another thought that we got is from, prompted by Principal Swanson here, and I appreciate that, is, is our teacher retention, particularly at Farmington, who's been doing this for four years, is very high. We've had a few people leave Farmington and most of them have left to try their hand at the school administration effort. But we don't have teachers leaving the profession in droves from our, from our schools that have implemented for a long time. And so that's just a, one aspect of the, of the consideration as well.
Thank you. Appreciate it, everything you've done tonight for us. Thank you.
Ms. Tanner?
My question involves the mentoring piece. I know at Farmington, this has been implemented. And I'm, I'd like to know two things. What does that look like in the ideal form? What are the benefits of that? And when it's really implemented well? And secondly, what's realistic for our teachers? I've, I've heard from teachers and parents that the mentoring piece is difficult to do well with our large class sizes. I think they're supposed to meet with the student every one to two weeks, but the feeling is that maybe it's more realistic to do every three to four weeks and then sometimes the reality is every two months. And so, but I think there are some real benefits to that when it's implemented well. So I'd like to hear both the real and the ideal.
Dr. Paul talked a little bit about the parent or the adult connection with the student at school. It's in our survey. It's something we care about deeply. This started a decade ago when we really intentionally were focused on measuring whether every student has an adult at the school that they can talk to if they have a problem and that they trust and that is advocating for them on the academic and, and personal side as well. So mentoring is, is an attempt at that. We don't expect that every student will say, it's my mentor teacher, that's my person. You know, it could be a counselor. It could be a, a support service worker in the school. It could be somebody. But we want to make sure that somebody has, everybody has somebody. One of the things we do to reduce class size, particularly in mentoring, is that that's a, that's a all-hands-on-deck kind of an approach. So where, in a typical first-period class, a, a good portion of my teachers are having a prep period. And so those students are distributed among the other classes. For mentoring, those students are distributed among all staff. So it's not a true, like our average class size in the school is much smaller in a mentoring class because it's all hands-on-deck. I, I'd like to ask Principal Swanson to come and talk about what happens during those mentoring periods and kind of the expectation about frequency of contact and some of those kinds of things.
I think that what you've said is exactly correct. Our goal is that, that
I think that what you've said is exactly correct. Our goal is that each mentor teacher would meet with each student and have that individual connection piece every two weeks. We are finding that that reality has been tougher. It has pushed out to three to four weeks and that is a school's administration. We have to come to some conclusions and some solutions for those teachers to be able to help them to do that. I can tell you, we've seen great success. And again, I know not every student has that awesome connection with the teacher, but I've seen more connections with mentor teachers and students than I've ever seen in my career. That's a staple piece that no matter where I go the rest of my life, I hope to take mentoring with me. When we have a student in distress, we have a student with issues at home, we have things going on in families, those parents are all contacting that mentor teacher. This isn't calling into a front office. This isn't just trying to get ahold of the administration. We're getting that information from that mentor teacher. A great example of this, a couple of weeks ago, I went into a classroom. One of our English teachers is expecting a baby this next Wednesday. And I went into the class and I was very concerned because during the mentoring time, things were a little chaotic. There was 12 parents of the mentoring students there throwing that teacher a baby shower.
[laughing]
That's the connection that those parents have made with that teacher and with those students. This is something that I think we can always improve on and we have to improve on because every student has to have a connection with an adult in that building outside a counseling appointment one time per year with the parent and the students. We've got to have that connection on a daily basis, on a regular basis. And having mentoring check-ins and goal sets with students once every three to four weeks, it's not going to cut it. And that's a job that we as an administration have to, have to fix to give our teachers that ability. And if that means that we put more hands on deck and we put away some rooms with custodial service or we lock the front office and send out office managers, those are things that we have to look at to get more hands on deck, to make that a better connection. But I've never seen a connection like this in any other school or any other program. And I would argue that regardless of the educational system we have or we want to be successful with, that personal connection with adults in the building and parent involvement are going to be the main two things that are going to make that happen.
Ms. Cook.
Seventeen years ago, we began in Davis School District to try and offer advisory periods and to provide that extra layer of mentoring. And it has been fraught with many, many difficulties. And there is nothing superior to the Summit program for the mentoring piece. And each student deserves to have that mentoring opportunity with those mentor teachers. It also includes that piece where there's really great training for teachers and really great structure of what that mentoring relationship looks like and that goal setting. It truly, after seventeen years of looking for something that would truly work for our students, there's nothing better than the mentoring piece in Summit.
And absent, if I can just put a capstone on this part of the discussion, we have eighty-nine principals in our school district. And I know them personally. And there is not a one of those eighty-nine that if a parent called or came in and sat down and said, I'm worried about my daughter or son, she feels like nobody knows her name and she feels like nobody in your building cares. There's not one of those eighty-nine people that isn't going to move heaven and earth to try and make a difference in the life of that kid. I, and I usually am not so bold in my, in my assurances, but I know these people. And if that's the concern, if the concern is that nobody knows my kid and nobody cares about my kid, we will solve that concern. But we have to have you come and tell us so that we know.
Ms. Stevenson.
Just as leadership, I'd like to thank this board. They've come prepared tonight. They've studied. They care. They've taken this seriously and they will continue to take all, all issues seriously. So thanks to all of you. Many of you have asked many of the questions that I've come with. To reinforce what Dr. Toon said about teacher retention, that was one of my concerns. And I met with Susie Jensen in HR last week and she assured me of just exactly what you said. She can call up every reason, everyone's transferred, changed, exited the education system, anything. And Summit has not caused a problem with, with teacher retention. I would like to ask, this isn't my last question, but, but this is just on behalf of the board and I, and I'm sure John too, this is a great handout. And I'm sure there's many people out there would like this information. We livestreamed this meeting, but they won't have some of this, like, well, Liz had asked about data privacy and things. That's addressed here. And those links that you've put in there are great.
It's in our board, it's attached in the board-
It is already put on?
In the board book. So it's available to the public.
It is. So they can call, all the links are there too. So then call that.
Yeah, and a hard copy was available to people who attended in person today.
Okay. My last question. So there's lots of advantages, I know, to Summit. But if a school decides they, they really don't care to go that direction, can we take the advantages that we know in Summit such as assessments of students? I mean, I've heard that from so many teachers. I can assess my students so much better. Is there a way that we could draw that, take that assessment of students and implement it into our Canvas at all? Or is there an opportunity to do that?
Well, we're currently engaged in doing that through the learning first system for secondary. So our science curriculum and assessments are the most fully developed and built and are in various stages of pilot this year and for next year. So that is our goal, that each one of the priority standards has assessments, both like a priority assessment or a additional focus area, multiple choice, quick assessment of content knowledge, and then deeper performance tasks is what we're calling them in that learning first system. So that is development. Our philosophy is that when it comes to personalized competency-based learning, we really want it to be grassroots growth and something that grows within the school and that they ask for top-down support from the district. And so we have these schools that have implemented Summit because that was the choice they wanted to make. They wanted to really dive into PCBL. We have other schools that are much more measured in that approach and they have that coming up in a department or with a couple of teachers or an interdisciplinary group of teachers that are working together that want to try some things. So we have a personalized competency-based learning team and we're supporting those efforts that schools want to take across the district.
I'll add to that too. My, my grandma used to whipped cream with this little thingy that had a gear and you like turned it like that. And if, if a school did that, many of our teachers and many of our programs, they would look right to Canvas and they would see resources that Ms. Cook talked about and they would be like, great, we're ready. And so yes, they can, the, the answer is yes. There are some things about that transition that would feel a little bit like whipping cream by hand. The, the data systems would not readily be available for identification of where a student is. The, the delivery of student resources on demand for a student who's either ahead or behind wouldn't be ready and available right away. So there would be some pains with, for a school that went that direction. Now, we're not going to get in the way of that. If that's the direction a school wants to go, we will support them. Top-down support, like bottom-up decision-making, top-down support, like Ms. Cook said. But the, we would need to recognize that some aspects of the system that are very specifically designed tools to assist would be lost in that decision.
Thank you. As I, and I just want to say thanks again. I, I publicly apologize to you, Belinda, for all my phone calls, texts, and everywhere I am with her, I just constantly am asking questions about it. But this whole, I mean, administrators I've reached out to, everyone has been very kind and gracious to answer all questions. So thanks to all of you.
Ms. Phipps.
Yeah, just for me, this really probably will be the final for me. And actually, I have no more questions. Actually, I do. It's just, now I've got a process, but I'm, when, now old school is cubby kind of stuff and if you're thinking that way. And, and it's always me trying to figure out, how do we have the win-win in this? And how do we make, and we have so many people that feel that they're losing and then, and then you hear the real, I've heard the passion from many teachers especially at Farmington High that come and look and look at what, what the great things. And, and I believe them. I don't think that, that, you know, they're off on some weird thing. We've also heard stories that are very concerning and, and we don't want to lose any of our kids or put anyone in a bad place. And, and so I appreciate, it sounds like they, there is movement to, to say, where do we improve? Where is the win-win in, in these things? And, and hopefully it's not a, or, you know, the rest of it, if there's no win-win that, that somebody loses and we walk away. But I appreciate the efforts and I appreciate that I've been offered the opportunity to come and listen at community councils and on other thing, other places to hear that feedback. And I, I just hope that we'll continue to work on how we, we make this win-win for as many people as we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Mumford.
Yeah, I don't think I have any further questions. Just maybe a little insight. Do you feel like there's a way we could define and, and maybe promote or share with parents steps they could take if they're in one of those situations where they feel like they're, you know, three-fourths of the way through the school year and drowning in whatever their situation is? I just, I feel like in the short term, you know, we've got some up, like higher level decisions to make about platform adoptions and processes and school adoptions. But I, I'd like us to be able to get to a place within the next couple of weeks where we could have a consistent, is there a point person in the building that we can identify for them to reach out to and, and that person's prepared with some different options of support? But that's just a concern I have before we leave tonight.
Thank you. You know, obviously I'll work with Superintendent Newey on this and our schools and school directors and, and Ms. Cook. That point is well taken and we will work to address that concern right away.
Mr. Eckersley anymore?
Ms. Tanner.
I have similar concerns to Ms. Mumford, that, that there is compassion and responsiveness and solutions and, and care and concern given to people who are really, truly struggling. That's so important to me. So my question is, and I heard from people on this, that please don't make us learn a third learning platform, you know, learning management system. Please don't, we don't want to do that. Two is enough. But have you looked at other LMSs that are, in your mind, up to the standards of Summit or no?
I have attended a couple of vendor presentations on the advice of colleagues in the state advisory committee. And none of them have risen to the reporting, the control of curriculum and the mentoring piece as Summit has.
And we've looked at other, like broader tools, like competitors of Canvas. Some of them have some features that Canvas does not have. We enjoy the statewide implementation of Canvas right now. So we're confident in what we, I mean, obviously there will be new development and new tools and things coming out. We will keep our ear to the tracks on all of those developments. But for right now, we're confident that for the really intentional personalized work that happens in schools, Summit is the best and most accelerated tool available right now. Canvas is the most widely used and most available tool for the general implementation of deep curriculum.
I do have two other questions, but I'll, I can wait until it comes back to me.
I think we're all done on this end. So you're, finish yours.
You said that the goal is to have the fourteen percent of the class time centered on studying for and passing off the PFAs?
Well, I don't know that it's exactly fourteen percent, but I think we want to get away from students and parents who are reporting that they're spending eighty to ninety percent of their time working on the PFA and the AFA. And then the, they have very little time left to spend in the deep work of the projects. So we want to work towards a greater balance. What is really appropriate? And I don't know that I can speak to that. I think that our principals can do a better job of that than I can on what's really appropriate and would, would be the mean of, this is what students need for the AFA and PFA knowledge and content upload. And this is what we really need to have, that deep robust learning in a project. But I, we're out of balance right now in my estimation and as I have met with students and parents and that we've got to get to a little different balance on that. I don't know, the fourteen percent refers to that, the percentage of the grade that the AFAs and the PFAs now consist of.
Gotcha. So, so, okay. So, sorry. That was the grade, not the, the time.
Correct.
But I think it kind of correlates with the time a little, a little bit. So what does the rest of the time in the class look like? What does, what does project-based learning look like? What, or what, how is a teacher managing their class for the rest of the time if, I don't know, say twenty percent of the time they're working on these PFAs?
Well, I, I think Principal Hill spoke to that in some of the robust projects that they've been working on, that that should be, once a student has passed their PFA and AFA, they should be engaged in that project, which includes collaborating with other students, collaborating with the teacher, doing some research, putting the presentation or the essay or, or the way that students chosen to demonstrate the competency in that, that it would be a combination of study, research, collaboration, assembling a product, then presenting it, getting feedback from both the teacher in those checkpoints and other students.
Okay. And then the last one is, can they, can students, I know they can't take a PFA test or AFA test at home. Can they study for a PFA?
Absolutely. Yep, absolutely. And, and that's where we need to work with our mentors and, and improve that process of, of having students really learn how to take notes and then be able to study. We have some inefficiencies there that students aren't studying the right things, maybe not enough of the one standard versus another standard. There's, there's a lot of improvement that we can work with students and teachers to help improve that passing rate of the AFA and PFA.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm going to give Superintendent Newey a minute.
Thank you, President Board. Board, thank you for your time. Thank you for the investment. We thank all the parents and those that have listened as well as those that have been here tonight and our students for their work. We appreciate the effort and, and the investment in learning. It's, it's extremely important to us that every student succeed. And we want everything we can to make that happen. I want to thank our administrators that came tonight, particularly those that it wasn't asked that you be here. And thank you for your investment. It, it takes a lot of work to do new things, to do things that take excessive preparation and training. And we thank you for your work there. We appreciate our security from Farmington City as well. Again, Dr. Toon and Ms. Cook, you, we really appreciate the extra work in terms of accumulating data. Board, you should know that, that this, the data that they've put together is not special for tonight in terms of the resources accessed. We have an outstanding data and assessment department that monitors all of our students and all of our work. And, and we appreciate their hard work that, that happens on a regular basis in all aspects of our learning. Thank you.
Board members, do you have any comments you'd like to make before I close?
Just quickly, I, I think it's important for us, so we kind of leave with a, with a plan so people know where we're going. My, my understanding is that the district's committing to define an adoption process for any future schools. It's important to know there are no schools that are adopting Summit this year. I think that relieves a little, there's some anxiety out there, is, is my school next or something? So I think as we work through some of these things, know that it's the schools that are in, in action are, are going to work on improving those processes. And there's a, a slow, steady process for any schools to investigate in the future. We're looking at an independent study commitment to, to look at outcomes and perspectives and perceptions and values that come out of having Summit or challenges that we need to identify if we need to make a change. Are there any other things, Board? I mean, I kind of came here thinking if, if we need to, then there's a potential for Board- action. I'm leaving feeling like those are addressing a lot of the concerns I had.
The consistent theme that you hear from these administrators, which echoes every administrator, every teacher that's involved in this program, is their willingness to help kids. And if these people in here are representative of the rest of the district, that are involved in this, and really every school, whether they're Summit or not, if the commitment that we've heard tonight is indicative of what we have in the district, then when we leave tonight, what they're going to be doing, what they've talked to me about as I visit with them, is to figure out ways to do this better. Figure out ways to get this done so that we meet the needs of more kids. I was in a school the other day where just recently, they recognized something that had happened with a 504 student. And that principal immediately got staff members and said, "We've got to change this. When we get into this next year, we can do a better job with these kids that have 504s." So I think, Ms. Mumford, my reaction to the question that you asked, and I think you laid out very well some of the things that we heard tonight, but going forward, in addition to all of what Ms. Mumford covered, I'm a hundred percent confident that however good we are this year, we're going to be better next year. We're going to be better with what we do in Summit, and we're going to be better because we're going to be willing to learn. Anything else? Ms. Tanner?
Yeah, I appreciate those, you laying out those, Ms. Mumford, the commitments that are being made tonight. When would be a good time to have a report back on how we're doing on those commitments? Superintendent Newey?
Yeah, I think that we can, as we put that together, Dr. Toon's and Ms. Cook have already put some of that in motion. As we've, you know, we're not far off. We have been following a process. We can just put it in an organized format and make sure the board has access to that as well as our schools. The other, we'll just take some organization and secure possibly an RFP process.
So are you saying reporting back just digitally directly to the board or at a board meeting?
No, we would do that in a meeting.
Okay, so like, six months?
I would think probably-
Three months?
Yeah, I mean, easily within two months.
Okay, that'd be great.
Anything else? Ms. Phipps, when I'm done, would you make a motion to go to closed session, if you would please, for the purpose of personnel litigation and negotiations, please? And personnel, yeah. So I just, just a couple of things. I echo what has been said about our appreciation of everyone that is here, parents, staff members, those who have got in on the livestream. I'm sure that I'm pretty confident we've got quite a few educators that have watched a portion of this or all of it. And that, to me, that is indicative of this endeavor that we're involved in with education because it has many components. You know, we deal with seventy-two thousand, seventy-three thousand kids. In your homes, as parents, you deal with your children. And as you deal with your children, like all parents, and you see your kids struggle, then that's tough. It's hard. But the thing that I would share to reiterate what I just mentioned is the commitment of our educators to help a kid who is struggling. The times we meet with school personnel that have been laid out tonight about getting questions answered or getting ideas of what we can do to help, has to be specifically focused on the need of your child, and not really the program. I mean, much of what we've heard as board members has to do with the like or the dislike of Summit. But I think what I take from tonight is this, that the closer we can get to those who see their child struggling, to what that struggle is, the closer we can get to identifying that, then the better we are capable as educators to help you as a parent and to help your child get in a path that is more productive, builds more confidence, he or she experiences more success. And I don't know anybody that I've ever met in my forty years as a teacher and my five, six years on the board, I don't know many educators, in fact, I don't know any, that are going to say, "Look, that's all I can, that's all I can do, your kid's just going to have to fail." They're going to keep looking. And I would go so far as to tell you without knowing for a fact, but I'm sure that Dr. Paul and Principal Hill and Principal Thompson spent a lot of time communicating with each other, as three of our junior high principals that are running Summit. And I would suspect that there's a lot of conversations between Dr. Lenford and Principal Swanson, and even others that might even, not even be in the state of Utah, or in the state of Utah they use it. But the point I make is this, they're learning, and they're learning from each other, and they're helping. And there are issues that they might be facing with kids that they don't know the answer to, but there's going to be a willingness there for them to find it. So moving forward, I think we have to understand, whatever we do, we need to have a learning management system. This is one that's been chosen as a possibility for educators to use. And Ms. Mumford has clearly delineated the fact that this is an important part of what the board wants to see, is a standardization of how that implementation takes place, if it takes place. So, we're going to leave with, we're going to leave with some ideas, but also some decisions that we know need to be made. And I'm very appreciative of the time that we've taken tonight and what we've been able to learn. It's been good for the seven of us, and I include Ms. Gerard because she's been actively involved in the learning part of this as well. But going forward, our commitment is to help each individual kid. And not as a group of seventy-two thousand or not just two thousand twelve that were at Farmington High this year, it's to help all these kids. So, if you have a question, we'd be happy to entertain that after we're done, okay? Ms. Phipps?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we go into closed session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, personnel, and pending litigation.
Motion by Ms. Phipps, second by Ms. Stevenson, is to go to closed session for the purpose of personnel litigation and negotiations. Thank you. Ms. Mumford?
Yes.
Ms. Phipps?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson? Yes? Ms. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Eckersley?
Yes.
Thank you.